Start.
Amanda, let me know when you're ready.
In one moment, and we are live.
Okay, ready to begin?
Okay, good evening and welcome to the January 26, 2021 Regular Board Meeting, the Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. Given the need to conduct this board meeting in a virtual environment, the Board of Directors required members of the public wanting to make comments on agenda items or at courtesy of the floor to pre-register by 5:00 PM today. Take a roll call for attendance, Ms. Cancro.
Here.
Ms. Drummond.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Navarette.
Here.
Ms. Purdue.
Here.
Ms. Reese.
Here.
And Mr. Winters.
Yeah.
Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we have a number of presentations to share with the board. But the first and maybe one of the most important is sharing the Award of Excellence. Here this evening, we have Dr. Jason Sorgini, high school principal, to share a number of individuals that have done an outstanding job for us, both serving the students, staff, and the community of the Methacton School District. Dr. Sorgini?
Good evening, Dr. Zerbi and members of the Board of School Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening to recognize the dedication of several staff members at Methacton High School by bestowing on them the Award of Excellence. Our first two honorees this evening are actually co-teachers who teach together. The first is Mr. Matt Ryan. Matt is an English teacher at the high school. He is a silent leader who does everything in his power to facilitate the success of our students and our staff. He's approachable to students who want to be the best version of themselves for him. Matt's selfless dedication is demonstrated on a daily basis. Matt is also serving on our newly created DEI leadership team. He is an amazing asset to our high school. Our next award recipient is Mrs. Tracy Murray, who co-teaches with Mr. Ryan. Tracy Murray is a special education teacher at the high school. She is dependable, caring, and selfless. Tracy is always willing to lend a hand to anyone who needs it. She forges relationships with students, families, and colleagues that show her dedication to their well-being. Goes well beyond the classroom. Tracy always goes the extra mile for her students and cares deeply for them. Our next Award of Excellence winner is Mr. A.J. Mada, teacher of senior students in United States government. In that class, he teaches the students about the US government and its many functions. He brings our political system alive by totally engaging the students and bringing out his vibrant personality in the discussions that he has with them every day. Beyond the classroom, A.J. has a huge heart. He organizes complete Thanksgiving holiday dinner donations from our staff. This year, eight Methacton families benefited from his commitment to our district's children. And as many of you know, A.J. also created a partnership with Bodine High School for International Affairs in Philadelphia. And it's an exchange program between the students at Bodine and the students at Methacton. And I believe several of the board members have actually accompanied A.J. on that trip. And that's a tremendous asset, and A.J. is a tremendous asset to Methacton. Our next Award of Excellence winner is Mrs. Charlene Prozer, who's been at Methacton High School for 14 years and works at the high school as an instructional aide. She's meticulous with her data keeping and helps every single teacher and instructional assistant in the building. This year, she has led the data monitoring and collection for the Special Education Department. She is an absolute integral asset, and Dr. Gravine has asked me to pass along that she could not do what needs to be done without the assistance of Mrs. Prozer, who continually goes above and beyond for the students, staff, and our building. Our next Award of Excellence winner is Mr. Steve Martin, a custodian at Methacton High School. Not only is Steve always willing to help when needed, but he's also proactive in anticipating requests that may arrive. I work with Steve every day, and we're always together first thing in the morning at arrival. And I can always depend on Steve to do what needs to be done. He's worked a variety of different events at the high school, and he always makes sure that everything is done correctly and safely for our students. He's friendly and easygoing to work with as a colleague, and we're very fortunate to have Steve as part of our Methacton High School team. And finally, Ms. Karen O'Neill is a valuable member of the Activities and House Principal's Office. She provides support to our students, staff, and families and has contributed to a seamless transition from the Counseling Department. She's always eager to lend a helping hand when the need arises and approaches any challenge with a positive outlook. And I can tell you that Karen has really gone above and beyond this year. At the end of last year and this year in the virtual environment, she has been my right-hand person in the process of giving out books and other materials to our students and collecting them back. And I couldn't have done it without her, and I appreciate that very much. Methacton High School is fortunate to have dedicated staff members like Matt, Tracy, A.J., Charlene, Steve, and Karen. And it's my privilege to be able to recognize them for the good work that they do for our students. Thank you very much for allowing me to be with you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sorgini, and here's a round of applause for all of those employees. Next on the agenda for guests and scheduled speakers, we have assurance testing. With us this evening, we have Michelle Masters. Michelle is a Division Director with Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services. This evening, Michelle is going to talk to you just briefly about what we're terming is called assurance testing. And what it is, is another mitigation matter during the COVID-19 pandemic that we can use to help keep our staff, students, and our Methacton community safe. Michelle?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me tonight to talk about antigen testing and assurance testing. So to start out, this is a collaboration with the Office of Public Health in Montgomery County, as well as CHOP Policy Lab and school districts within Montgomery County. And what this program, antigen program, is, is bringing rapid point-of-care testing into the schools on different levels. So like Dr. Zerbi had said, we're using this type of testing as another mitigation step. I think some of us might have seen the CHOP Swiss cheese model that includes masking and social distancing, limiting of number of individuals in a group. This is just another step to help prevent COVID, as well as to keep in-school education, which is ultimately a goal as the Office of Public Health. The antigen testing program developed really by CHOP Policy Lab, which is rolling out through the Southeast, is using the identification of virus and trying to get to viral suppression and reducing the risk of transmission in schools. Antigen testing is a 15-minute self-collected test. It will give you a probable positive, and within 15 minutes, we will know. So it allows for very early detection, for rapid response, meaning if you have a positive through an antigen test, you can immediately start contact tracing, you can immediately move individuals from an environment that's at risk, immediately put people in quarantine before there's any risk of spread. So with this program, there are three arms of the program. So the first arm is this assurance testing, or what a lot of us in public health call surveillance testing. So the program is set up to screen staff and teachers on a weekly basis. And that's for individuals that are not experiencing symptoms, have not, and have not been close contacts to a confirmed case. And that would be testing once a week to look at what the viral load is within your community. The second arm of testing is testing of symptomatic individuals. So people that come to school and during the school day become ill with COVID-like symptoms, we could do a rapid test to identify if it's COVID to allow, again, for quick response. And then the third arm of the program is really this, what we're calling CHOP's unlimited ideas. It could be expanded into assurance testing for extracurriculars. It could be expanded into assurance testing for other activities or specific classrooms. But this is just an initiative to let's bring testing where it would be beneficial as a tool. So the antigen testing, so everyone knows, we are using the BioNext Now test cards. So it's a self-collected swab that goes up the nose, just a couple centimeters. You swab around both nostrils, so it's a total of a 10-second each nostril, so total 20-minute swab. If you've had any experience with point-of-care testing, or we say it's like a pregnancy test. Two lines, it's positive, one line, it's negative, and it's very simple, very simple test. So really, you only need to be certified by CHOP. You don't need to be a nurse or a health physician to run this. You just actually get a certification from both us and CHOP. We've also set it up for all school districts that participate in that program. Because antigen testing is really the first step in preliminary testing, if somebody has an antigen positive, both CDC and the state have an algorithm on confirming that result. So we are lucky enough to be able to provide point-of-care confirmation tests, or what we call PCR tests. We are able to provide each school district with a Q machine. That's a machine that we're using. It will give a confirmatory result in 25 minutes. So if you think about it, you can have people that are tested. If they have antigen negative, we don't think it's COVID, they can go back to their normal day, or students are good to, you know, go home and follow the normal sick policy. If you have someone that's antigen positive, we have to confirm it's COVID. So you would have this PCR test on site. You wouldn't have to go to CVS or our site and wait two to three days for a lab result. You would get it right there on site. We've also worked very closely with CHOP and Federal HHS to develop a web-based application that will allow for registration, as well as reporting directly to the Office of Public Health and to Pennsylvania Department of Health. Just so everyone knows, any test positive or negative or invalid or insignificant or insufficient needs to be reported to the Office of Public Health. So we have some school districts that are doing 2,300 tests per week. And this app really alleviates a lot of that data entry and a lot of the manual work. A lot, this whole program is really technology-based. So I would love to answer any questions that you all have about this program.
Yeah, before we take your questions, Michelle, just another couple pieces of information for the board is Cheryl Pfeifer and Annette Kramer, both school nurses within Methacton School District. Cheryl being at the high school, Annette being at Eagleville Elementary School, are leading the effort to put a plan together for the implementation of the assurance testing. At least the first arm of, as Michelle mentioned, the first arm of that is to do staff testing. Certainly, as we progress into the other buildings and progress further rollout, we really do believe that this is a real good opportunity for our employees, not only to help mitigate, you know, the spread of COVID within our schools, but this is, this is a service that's available to our employees that is not available to other workers in other industries. And therefore, it also helps them from a personal perspective as well. So we think there's a lot of value in this, and we did a survey just the other, the other week in terms of whether our staff was interested in it. And we had 668 responses. Of the 668 responses, 400, and I think 35, stated that they would be interested in participating in the rapid assurance testing. So that means there's a lot of work ahead of us if we're going to address all of those people that are interested. But certainly, six of our nine nurses have already gone out and got some of the training completed to date. And we're looking forward to getting this rolling here in the next week or so. So questions for Ms. Masters? Ms. Reese?
Um, Ms. Masters, I don't really have a question. I just wanted to thank you, and I wanted to let the board know that Liz and I, in our North Monco report, we're going to share with you that the North Monco staff is already taking part in this. So that, and that it's going well, and that they've gone through the training. So we're lucky to have it at North Monco, and I'm thrilled that we're going to have it here now at Methacton. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Ms. Masters.
Thank, Ms. Purdue?
Thank you also for presenting this. I think this will really be helpful as we are looking at, you know, putting in different plans to bring more students back on campus. And my question for you, are we looking at one machine for this school district, or are we getting multiple machines? I think you mentioned maybe one machine.
Yeah, so you'll get, so you will get pretty much unlimited resources. So based on the survey, you would get 400 antigen tests per, well, depending what your plan is, per week. It really is what the plan is. And then if one of those antigen tests becomes positive, then you need that Q machine to do the PCR. Now, each school district will only get one, anecdotally, from data that we've seen from other school districts. They are actually only running maybe one or two PCRs or Q machine tests per week. It's not a lot, because it's not the primary source. It's a confirmation test. And what other schools have done is has set up that Q machine in their administrative buildings to have one location where people in the whole district, if they need to get confirmation testing, go to one location. I say this, but each school district has to make the program what they see, really, and what works best for them in the sense of some are testing staff throughout the day, some are doing after hours, some are doing, you know, building by building. So it's all what you see and you're able to do, because we are collaborating with you. We can help you plan, we can get the training. But it's you on your staff that's really working to get this off the ground, and everyone wears so many hats. So, you know, we try to give you all the resources and make it successful.
Yeah, in addition to that, Michelle, we are going to start a slow rollout at the high school and at Eagleville so that both Annette and Cheryl have a good grasp of how this will operate so that they can be the leaders across the district as we plan to, to address it on a larger scale.
Yeah.
Ms. Purdue, do you have any other questions? No?
No, that's it. Thank you, Michelle.
Ms. Aubie Larsonese?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Masters. I appreciate this, and I also know that you had tried to join us last week, but our discussion on return to school went on a little longer than expected. So I appreciate you giving us a second chance on your presentation. Dr. Zerbi, this is really more of a question for you. Where is our machine going to be located within our district?
That is yet to be determined. I just received an updated plan from Ms. Kramer and Ms. Pfeifer today. We're planning to meet tomorrow to talk about how that is going to be handled. So I don't have any, I don't have definites on it at this point.
Okay, will we be using the testing for, I know our initial rollout is for asymptomatic or non-symptomatic staff testing, but Ms. Masters had also mentioned that you can use it for an initial screening for anyone who develops symptoms during the school day. Will we be using that for students who develop symptoms, or is this still going to be just for staff?
Well, Ms. Masters, I'm not 100% certain. I know there's some like parameters around that question. So is CHOP allowing for symptomatic students to be tested? I know they would be for staff.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's kind of two thoughts to this. So we are trying to test staff and students that are symptomatic during the school day. So individuals that start to feel ill during the school day, you know, while they're waiting for their parents to pick them up, you're able to do a quick swab and get that result. But, you know, it's only really should be used in those types of circumstances. We are working with CHOP to develop a more comprehensive plan about, because it's such a quick result, we don't want children or individuals to attend school to get tested. So that is actually another program that we're working on at the Office of Public Health is to do some sort of direct testing through our testing site for individuals that are symptomatic at home. Instead of having to go to CVS or wait for an appointment, if you're adopting this antigen program, we can really work through a quick referral process for those people that are sick at home so they don't come to school to get an antigen test. So I hope that makes sense. But, you know, I know the stress of getting a test. You don't want to wait. You know, you go on the county website, and you try to get in, and you try to get an appointment, and people just want to get tested. We're just trying to alleviate that anxiety of like, if you need to get tested, don't send a child to school or don't come to school to get tested. We'll find another avenue. But ultimately, we do hope that that 10 o'clock hour, when kids start to go down in the school day, you're able to test them before you send them home. So if it is COVID, your contact tracing is done immediately.
Okay, and then this would probably be another conversation, but I'm imagining that we would need to get some sort of a consent form going from parents if we were going to be administering this test to students at all during the school day.
Yeah, we, we'll deal with that when we're ready to address student testing.
Okay, and I'll have more questions related to student testing if and when we cross that bridge. But I think that does it for the staff portion of it. So again, thank you, Ms. Masters. I appreciate your time.
Of course.
Other questions? Mr. Navarette?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I guess I'm surprised everybody's so subdued. This is really, really, really exciting, especially as we get everybody back into school. I guess, just to recap, so, and make sure I heard you right. So we're going to be doing, we're going to have the ability to do these rapid tests. We're going to have them, I guess, in each building, the point-of-care testing. And then we're going to have our own PCR machine within the district that will be able to run PCR tests to confirm any positives from the point-of-care test.
Correct.
That's fabulous.
So remember, the antigen test, we really recommend that's, you know, if somebody's symptomatic and they have positive antigen, we're considering them COVID, but instead of going through the whole algorithm, like you have them right there. Everything's done right there, and it's really beneficial to your staff that don't all just live in Montgomery County. They, you know, you don't have to send a staff member home to wherever they go to find an appointment. Everything's right there for you.
Yeah, that's fabulous. I mean, thanks to Cheryl and Annette for taking the plunge and getting us on board with this. I'm glad we can, I'm glad we can come, you know, finally go public with this, that we have this to announce. This is great. What's, what do you think is the timeline, Dr. Zerbi, for pushing this out to all the schools?
That's going to be dependent upon how the initial implementation goes. I'm going to depend a lot on Cheryl and Annette to, you know, give me honest feedback about how long it takes, how much manpower is going to be needed, and what might be the best approach once they, you know, get their arms around the whole process. So my goal is to get this moving as fast as possible, but certainly, we want to do it well, and we want to do it in a way that allows for us to not only administer the test well, but, you know, obviously, having 400, you know, conceivably 400-some staff being able to get tested on a weekly basis, that's a lot of time. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to have to be well thought out. And so we're, you know, we're also looking at bringing in additional nursing support staff to help us through this process. Again, those, those folks will probably take over some of the roles of the daily nursing task, while our trained nurses, who are trained in the administration of this, will, you know, work with our building principals to organize the administration of this at key times throughout the day so that we're not taking away instructional time or other, you know, valuable time.
Okay, great. I guess, Michelle, my one last question then is, who's paying for all of this? If we're getting essentially as many tests as we need on a given, on a weekly basis?
So this is all really CHOP, CHOP Policy Lab. They've been directly working with Federal HHS and the White House Task Force. And they also have been looking at some foundations to support other initiatives. So it's, it's CHOP that's really funding all of this.
Okay, that's fabulous. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, thank you for coming to speak with us, and I'm really glad to see this rolled out in the district. This is great. I just, I have a couple just technical questions, I guess. One is about the accuracy of the, of the rapid test, particularly regarding false negatives. And then secondary to that, how, how quickly after exposure the virus might be detected through that test?
Okay, yeah, so we'll start with, so yeah, so there's some concerns about the false negative with the antigen testing. So we are confident, you know, we're really looking to detect positives. So we're more concerned about, you know, false positives and that. But what we're looking for is, you know, we're focusing on those that are asymptomatic. So really, if you look at the insert of the antigen test, those individuals that are negative, we truly can believe that they're negative. Those that are not symptomatic and test positive are the ones that we're like, oh, we're not sure, and that's why we need a confirmatory. Now, individuals who are symptomatic that get a negative antigen test, we're like, oh, that's a flag. And that's when we're going to say do the PCR test. Those are really the simple explanations. There is actually a whole document from PEDOH that says if you have a positive antigen, based on this scenario, then you need a PCR. If you have a negative antigen in these scenarios, you need a PCR to confirm. So we're staying consistent with that guidance.
Okay, thank you. And then how, how long after exposure can typically, can, can these tests pick that up?
So again, we're looking at several days, around two days prior to symptoms. So that's also what the goal of this is, is we've identified in several of the schools we've been working with so far are the pre-symptomatic phase where people aren't sick yet, where they can spread the illness. They don't have a large viral load, but they still can spread the illness. They end up testing positive, and usually about two to three days later, they start to develop symptoms. So we say about a two-day period before symptom onset.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is going to be a great way for asymptomatic and pre-symptomatic to catch those, those cases. So yeah, thank you so much. This is really great news, and thank you to the, to Annette and to Cheryl for spearheading this for us. This is really great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any other questions? See, oh, Ms. Purdue?
I just have one more question in reference to the PCR. I know we, we are saying for the antigen test, it's easy as getting a certification. Do we think we'll need additional support for actually doing the PCR testing?
Yes, I think it's a good question. So CHOP and Office of Public Health have coordinated a whole training program related to the BioNext Now cards and the Q machine. So once you're certified as a trainer, you'll be certified on both machines. And you do not, for both machines, you actually don't need to be a nurse. When you run, are running these test kits, you just need to have a nurse in the building. But ultimately, as long as you have trained staff, and CHOP's done an amazing job, they have three steps to their training. They have a webinar, they have a skills validation, and then they have a quiz. So there's three steps that you have to pass until we can say, you know, green light, you're good to do testing on your own. The other thing is, you know, a lot of you to know is that this testing is falling under our laboratory license because it's a clear wave. So the Office of Public Health will also be doing monthly site visits at these facilities, doing testing so that we can make sure that the quality assurance, quality control component is thought about as well.
No, thank you. I just know that in order to be qualified to run those assays, or there's some training that's involved, and wanted to make sure that we have the right procedures in place for it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add very quickly, just to give a shout out to North Monco. There, and some of their staff became certified to do that. So, and they are, in addition to what Dr. Zerbi said, they did get one more part-time nurse that they needed anyway, but that people in their building became certified with the training that Ms. Masters talked about. Excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Our nurses actually went to North Monco to get their training. Any other questions for Ms. Masters? But if there aren't, just please know that we'll be continuing to communicate with our parents and the board as we progress in this, in this process. And Michelle, as always, thank you so much for being with us, and thank you for your leadership in all of this. I think, just so everyone knows, Michelle was probably my first call back in March when, you know, things started going haywire. So I appreciate your support and your, your ability to stay with all this and stay on top of it all. Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the, the revision to the January 19 Case Explanted Learning Model. I just want to post the, the matter on the screen. This is the, the presentation for the revisions to the January 19 Case Explanted Learning Model. The recommendations for your consideration approval here on the 26th. The revisions to the 19th, so what I, what I want you to do as, as a board is think about all the dialogue and things that we had discussions about on the 19th. And understand that after we reviewed your feedback, we were able to go back and confirm that the best path forward, given all the information that we have, was to provide all the features and benefits listed in the January 19 plan and to continue with the following exceptions. That the options will be an all-online Monday-through-Friday option like we have today. And the in-person option will be an in-person Monday-through-Thursdays option with an all-virtual Friday. So in terms of what that virtual Friday will look like, it'll look pretty much the same as the virtual Friday looks today. So in terms of what that virtual Friday will look like, it'll look pretty much the same as the virtual Friday looks today in the alternating day hybrid model. Our intent is to, if approved this evening, is to get the parent selection for K through 12. Now, I know the revisions only reflect K through 6, but as you recall, we said back in October, when we approved the alternating day hybrid model, that at the change of the semester, we would provide grades, or all grades, K through 12, an opportunity to, I'll call, revisit their choice for whether being all online or taking the hybrid option. So at the 7 through 12 level, the, the option will be all online or the current alternating day hybrid model with a virtual Friday. Then on the 31st, by noon, we will close this, the survey. And just, just so you know, between the 27th and the 31st, there will be a number of phone calls, not only from our robo-call system, but also emails, and then personal phone calls on Friday from the building support staff in order to track down parents who have not yet made a selection as part of the, of a part of this process. February 1st, we'll do the balancing. The 2nd, we'll, you know, send notices out to parents in case there's some balancing. And if you recall, the balancing process is allowing us to ensure that, to the greatest extent possible, we fit as many students into the four-day, we'll call it the four slash one-week schedule, or four days in-person, one day virtual. And, and be able to try to keep the, the students and the teachers together. In instances where parents are, are okay with having a potential change in a teacher in order for us to balance the sections where needed, we will make those communications. And only based on the, the approval of the parent will we make a change in, in the teacher if need be. If, if that has to occur, and we believe it only will occur in a, in a, in a small number of cases, but if it does have to occur, you know, we, we will be communicating with those, with those parents. If there are no takers for the, the balancing process, we will then, for those levels, resort to what's called a 3-2 model, which would be three days in-person, two days virtual, where all students in the section that want to go in-person will be then grouped into a, into four subgroups, so that everyone has equal access to as many days possible for the in-person instruction. And then we will provide notice for final determinations on the 4th or 5th, and we will start on, on the 8th, as we previously had discussed back on the 19th. And of course, we do not have a timeline for 7 through 12. But what we can tell you is, after seeing the, after we look at the results from the, the survey that we'll send out, assuming this is approved, we could, based on those numbers, start thinking about the next phase of this at that level to invite students that, you know, want to come on premise. Because if it's any indication of what we're doing right now, there are a few students that are, that are attending that said they were going to attend, and therefore, it's possible to combine days of the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday group, and possibly provide access for four days a week of in-person instruction for those areas. However, it's all gonna be dependent upon the numbers, and we'll have to wait and see those results. And that ends my presentation on, on the proposal. Are there any questions on the revised recommendation? Ms. Aubrey Larsonese?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Zerby. So when the parents are going to elect for either an in-person or virtual option, how long is that choice good for? I know that we had talked about a possibility of kind of revisiting and giving parents an option of changing their, their choice at some point. Wanted to understand where we are with that.
Yes. So in our January 19th plan, we said that students who choose, you know, say in January, students that are, that make the choice to come in person and then decide that they want to go back to all virtual, they can make that choice, but they have to remain in that choice. And then any other student that made the choice to be in virtual in January, can, all of those groups can then look in April to possibly renew their decision. That's, that's part of the, the plan as it was outlined in, in the January 19th presentation.
So in April, if a parent finds that whatever option they chose is not working for their student or circumstances have changed and they need to make a change, they will be given that option to change in April?
Just to be clear, they can change one time from in-person to going all, all online at any time through this process. But then they'd have to stay there in, in that until April. And then, once we get to April, then anyone who is all online would have the option to, you know, go to in-person.
Okay. And it's just a one-time, you can, you know, opt to come in starting in April. I just want to make sure that families are aware of the duration of the, the time period that they're committing to. And, because I, as we've all seen for the past year, everything that we understand about this virus and everything we understand about how education is working in the past year has changed on a, a weekly, monthly, sometimes daily basis. I just want to make sure that we're clear that families that choose virtual, if circumstances change and they want to come back in-person in April, they will get that option.
That's correct.
Okay, but we're not planning to resurvey everyone in April? Or are we?
I, I, I'm not certain what the process will be at this point in time, but we will be allowing those who, we will, we'll obviously have to provide an option for parents. And so a survey is likely to be the, the issue, or to be issued. But I can't tell you at this point. All I can tell you is that when we looked at the way that the, the calendar fell and what the most optimum time would be, it's, it's right there in April. We will certainly make those determinations and give parents the option.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for members of the board? Not seeing, oh, Ms. Drummond?
Yeah, I just have a question about, or just really a comment to make sure that we're looking at offering more in-person class, classroom support, if we can, for the K to 6, because it's gonna be dual modality of teaching plus more kids. So I would just like to see, you know, as much classroom support as possible for the teachers.
Understood. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Ms. Reese?
Um, I'm not, uh, I'm not opposed to this plan, and I was not opposed last week. I preferred the first plan with some questions answered. That, that is what it is. I'm sure there's a third of the staff and community who liked the first plan, a third that love, you know, the next plan, and a, and a, and a third that are like, whatever you think is best. I appreciate administration's hard work. I appreciate the, the virtual day. I do not want to get into the nitty-gritty of that day. I would hope that building principals and staff have some leeway with that day. It was brought to my attention by several community members that they were upset that I suggested the day and that I was looking out for teachers only. The reason I'm bringing this up, and it really is a question, is because I have brought up this day at every, almost every, every committee meeting and every meeting. So I'm, I, I don't need you to go into the details of this day, but I, but I do need a little bit. Because this day, this virtual day, is for students first and then teachers. And not, not that teachers are secondary, but these children, and when I say children, I say K to 12, but let's look at the K to 6, are about to be halfway through their school year. That is 90 days of school with a relative, with a, with a pretty rigorous Zoom schedule. The children, we all know, are getting individualized help from their children, from their teachers as best as teachers can give it. And by 90 days, we know what children have not taken to this as well as others. And that extra day is really for those children. And I, and if some children don't need it, then they, they get a breath. So I, I'm not gonna go, I've talked about this at length. But people need to understand, and I, I'm sure they do, that nobody is trying to be soft on these kids or these teachers. I hear the term COVID hard. Absolutely. We're all living it, and some living it more than others. Thank you so much to our school nurses and all our healthcare workers. Thank you so much to everyone in education, everyone who's doing things differently. We could name every single, almost every single person who, who works during this time, or parents during this time. But I just want to make it clear, this, this day isn't to let parents have to do more work with the elementary kids or to let kids sleep till 10. And I know you said they're gonna check in. But the day is truly for children and their teachers. So I'm still confused. Are teachers going to have free time to meet one-on-one with children? Are teachers going to have time to have parent meetings on this day? Are teachers going to have extra time to plan? Are kids going to have a chance not to be on Zoom at 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00, or whatever the times are? That's all I would like. I don't need the nitty-gritty. Because you obviously took our feedback. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate those few extra days. And I apologize to anyone who is feeling like we delayed it and didn't make a decision. None of this is going to be perfect. But this day is important. So could you just give me a little bit of information on this day, please?
Yeah, I think the most important thing I can say about this day is that it's similar to the Fridays that we have now. And there, there is opportunity for instruction that, that occurs. There's opportunity for individualized work. There's opportunity for, you know, team meetings to occur for the staff or the principal to, to work with the team. So it's like, it's like any other day, and, but it, but it's a virtual day. And, you know, it's certainly not a, a day where, you know, the students are on from 7:30 in the morning till 3 o'clock in the afternoon, 100% of the time. But that's not, that's not a part of their, their regular day now, when we do the virtual. So I'm confident that this Friday has built into it the same benefits that, for both students and staff, for, that, that exists today in the virtual Friday. Are there, are there any other questions from members of the board? Ms. Perdue?
I know we've used the surveys in the past to capture information from parents. I guess I just want to know, I know we do the robo-calls and the emails, and parents use that avenue to make their selection. I'm just wondering, has that been effective? Have we, or do we generally have a huge number of parents that didn't receive the information or did not have time or get the information needed to make the selection by a certain time?
Ms. Perdue, you were, you were fading out, but I think you were talking about whether or not our, our parents are getting the communication in a timely manner. Certainly, Ms. Kelly is on the call here today, and she can, you know, talk to some specifics about that. But I know she is prepared to deliver the communication in the, the family's home language, which is, which helps some of that communication barrier from, and we also know that there will be a, a number of instances, not only from phone calls, emails, posting on social media, but our, our principals will be heavily engaged in making individual calls to, we'll call it the families that, that often are, are, are those who are, are last to respond. So, so we know how to target those families and make sure that everyone that needs to be communicated with will be and has an opportunity to make the, the selections and get informed about making those selections. Any other questions, Ms. Drummond?
Just real quick to clarify that the start, the implementation start date is the same as proposed last week, just with this tweak.
It, it is. We, 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 we tweaked some other things. We removed some of the, I think we removed a day within the, the, the parent selection process. So just so you know, we, we compressed this a little bit in order to make it work for February 8th. Because by pushing it back another week, we were gonna start getting into some other half-day week, or half, I'm sorry, half-week implementations. So we were, we were concerned about that, and we knew that that could be complicated for families to, to, to get, you know, engage with that.
I just have one more quick thing, Dr. Zerby. I would ask, you know, I, I think the secondary world is a different world than the elementary world. And it always has been, COVID or not. You know, and it's not to say one is easier, one is more, is not, is not, you know. Someone who teaches 10th grade English would be scared to death of teaching kindergarten, and a kindergarten teacher would probably not be interested in teaching 10th grade English. But I would ask that in our Friday memos, we have something from the K to 4 world that lets us know how they're doing. You know, I, I, I worry about our K to 4 students and staff. Because there is definitively some staff who wanted the old plan and some staff who, you know, wanted this plan, and definitely staff that probably wanted a different of this Friday. So if you could include some information, some honest information from each principal about what they're doing to help their staff, pros and cons, so that we are aware of what's going on positively and negatively. Because, you know, we all know this isn't perfect, and I appreciate the community, the staff, everyone. We all know, I'm teaching from my basement again for 14 days. I was, you know, in my classroom, and my school is shut down for 14 days. I don't want to be in my basement, but I am in my basement. It's not a perfect world. So if you could just please give us in our, in our Friday memo, some, some positives about the K, that the K to 4 teachers and staff, students are experiencing, and maybe some of their hardships that we can, that we can possibly adjust. Because we got, we have 90 more school days, you know, they'll, they'll have 90 school days once this starts. So, you know, we can, we can, we can move things around. And thank you, thank you to your administration and the community for their flexibility.
Yeah, I'd actually like to kind of pay back off of that request from Ms. Reese. I, one thing that I'm hearing a lot of is from teachers within our district and from teachers that I know in other districts, is that this is the most challenging year of their careers, whether it's their first year teaching or their 20th year teaching. And I'd like for us to explore ways that we can do something to alleviate some of that stress, whether it is additional supports in the classrooms and the, the K to 2 or K to 4, as Ms. Drummond had mentioned, get, collecting that feedback at the K to 6 level about what's happening in the classrooms and, and seeing what problems are, are developing and what things we can do. But I know we have a presentation this evening on student performance support and interventions. And I'd like to request that next month, we get some sort of a presentation on what we are doing. And it could be brief, but something that, that talks about what we are doing to support our staff. Because this is by far the most challenging time in, in their teaching careers. And I want to know that we are doing something to, to help support them through this. And Dr. Zerby, maybe that's something that you and I can discuss in our, our weekly conversations and, and kind of brainstorm that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the board on this matter? Mr. McGinnis?
Dr. Zerby, just a thank you to you and your staff for devising this plan. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any final questions? Seeing no other questions on this matter. The next item, the next presentation on the agenda is the Arrowhead New Construction Monthly Update. Dan Sacola, Dan, would you like me to post your matter on, on the screen?
Please.
Okay.
While Dr. Zerby's doing that, good, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's well. Had a blessed holiday season and Happy New Year. On the call with me tonight is Mark Binkley. Other than a handful of you, you probably don't recognize, he's the guy with the beard besides the name tag below. Uh, Mark's been with me for about, I guess we're going on 15 years now. And he's, uh, he's our director of field construction. Some projects he gets more intimately involved, some, some owners, Mefacton is is that place. So Mark is heavily involved with, um, everything we're doing in Mefacton. And, um, in addition to Mark, but not on the call, is Shelby Bonner. Some of you met him, um, on Friday. He's our, basically our full-time dedicated Arrowhead onsite person there every day. Uh, the eyes and ears for the district, you know, in the field, watching every bit of everything that's happening out there. Um, and then also not on the calls, Brenda Santiago, who, um, is our, basically our office component person for for everything that happens with Arrowhead in particular. Some of you know Angie. Angie's more involved with the master, Angie Lufson with the Master Plan Projects. That kinda round out our team. We have tonight, the the first and and really good news, very excited. The first of of many monthly updates on the Arrowhead project. Um, we expect this and we absolutely expect this to be an excellent project with, uh, just great news. Uh, looking forward to a great process. And, um, Mark's gonna take us through, this is kind of a, uh, a group, a group-formatted presentation, which of course could be tailored as necessary as the, as the board might like. Uh, Mark's gonna take us through some of the specifics and then I'll, I'll close it out.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, as you can see, uh, we have some photos and some, some brief descriptions of those photos. So the first thing is, uh, the fiber line to the old building, um, has been relocated. That was relocated because it was in the footprint of the new building. So that is completed. Um, some playground equipment existing that was out back was also falls into the area of construction for the new building, um, has been relocated out front so that it can still be used as playground equipment, uh, while the construction process is going on. And then they have some, some photos there of, uh, the tree removal that started and is is pretty well underway, actually by now. Uh, I, I think the tree removal is probably like 90% complete. Uh, scrolling down, the upcoming work for next month, uh, will be the installation of the construction fencing, which has started underway, demolition of the modular units, modular classrooms. That has also started and should be done by the end of the week. And, uh, installation of the E and S controls and setting up job site trailers and, um, lay down areas and start prepping for the, for the new Arrowhead Elementary School building pad.
As far as the budget is concerned, just kinda created this little cheat sheet so that we can all, you know, in real time, follow the, the, the changes to the project financially. And otherwise, a- as you can see, as of now, there's nothing. But, um, you know, and hopefully we'll keep those percentages really, really low as we move along. Again, there's no change orders. We do have an action item. What it, it's the last item on the sheet under Board Action. There, there is an action item. We have, uh, every, every construction project, um, has some level of testing on it. When you have a new construction of a building there, by code, there's a certain level of testing that's required for concrete, steel soils in particular, masonry. So we had, we had sent out, um, a request for proposals from three firms, um, got back to, uh, firms we're, we're familiar with. Hills Carnes was, was the low. This is a, um, you're basically asked, being asked to retain them as the testing agency. These are unit price contracts. There, even though we know what the building's gonna look like and and, you know, everything that goes into the building, the, the frequency of the testing is, is dependent on the conditions we find at the site, particularly the soils where the, the bulk of the, the funds go. So it's, it's a unit price contracting. We oversee it. And, um, that's, that's our recommendation to to go with Hills Carnes. We're, we're, we're familiar with the, this firm as well as, um, I think KCBA was familiar with one of them and we knew the other one. So that's it for the Arrowhead update. Be happy to answer any particular questions you might have.
Any questions for, uh, for Davia?
We had a great groundbreaking on Friday that Dr. Zerby hosted. The air was brisk, but it was a, it's a good kickoff, you know, brisk air for a great project.
Thank you, Mr. Sacala. Uh, and we'll go on to the next project, which is the, uh, mast, uh, the Mefacton School District, uh, CAS and Canopies, uh, uh, project bid tab. So.
Sorry, Dr. Zerby?
Yeah, I'll, I'll present that on the screen as well.
And I'll just start talking, just to give you a little background, I'm sure you've heard of this project. But, uh, it's been a while. The, uh, it's a master plan project. That was, uh, we, we, we've been talking about it for a couple of years now. And if the scope of it, it essentially involves canopies and pads at all the entrances to the high school. We, um, you know, some of the pa- some of the canopies are small at the smaller entrances. And then there's some freestanding ones as well, like at the main entrance in the auditorium, where they're, they're self-supported, quite large, integral drainage systems. There's a good deal of concrete that's associated with this work as well regarding to the pads underneath the con- underneath the canopies as well as, um, sidewalk, you know, there, there from, uh, it, it's, it's a fairly large scope of work. The board approved it a couple of years ago. We went out to bid. You, you, again, you're probably familiar with it. We went out to bid and it was awarded early last year. The, uh, we had good competition last year. We had four bidders. Uh, we had a very low, low bidder, but, um, because there's a little, the numbers are a little higher this time around. And I say this time around because we awarded the whole project to the little bidder last time at the beginning of last year. Unfortunately, you know, we've all reacted to COVID differently. That particular contractor essentially shut down for the, really shut down during COVID. Uh, and then when they emerged from it, they were not, they had, their stay had lost critical staff. We're not the same firm. We had a, a contract originally of, uh, about, say, 1.75 million to, uh, to do the work. We wound up negotiating, the plan was to, to negotiate a credit change order for what amounted to the bulk of the work, because the work was planned to be done during the summertime while, while school was not in session due to the nature of the work at the entrances to the school. So we, uh, knowing that we couldn't get that work done, that the plan was, which we did negotiate a credit change order of like 1.4 million and change against that, that 1.75. Uh, and their, their net contract was about 300,000. And again, the intent was to rebid the project, essentially the exact same project, but for the piece that was completed last year. So that, that bidding took place. We, we received five, uh, bids of the five bidders. We had, again, we had four last time. One did not return. Uh, the low bidder last time is, as far as we know, not even bidding, uh, public work at this point. We had two returning bidders. Our low bidder, Anthony Biddle, had bid it last time, as well as Bolton Construction had bid it last time. And, uh, and then we had a new firm, uh, a couple of new firms, Jones Masonry and Walter Brucker. But the, uh, the net effect of it is you can see the numbers are fairly tight. Uh, they're much tighter than they were last time, uh, because there were no alternates. We had two alternates the last time. We had rolled one into the, we had selected two. One was completed during last year's work. The other one was rolled into the base bid. This time Anthony Biddle was low at 2.16 million and change. And, uh, we've checked their, we, we're familiar with the firm. We checked their, all their references. Uh, they're out of Ambler, PA. And, um, yeah, happy to answer any questions on it.
Any questions for Dan on the canopies and pad project? Um, Ms. Drummond?
Hi, Dan. Um, thanks. I, I just was, so, so the other, I'm just trying to understand. So the other firm that was previously engaged with us did complete some work.
They completed the little canopies.
Okay. Okay. So something was done for that.
Sure.
Um, okay. And then, um, so this is, and and are these bids about where you expected them to come?
They're honestly, they're a little higher than we thought. We thought they'd be, they thought they'd be lower. But, um, again, because of the nature of the tightness of the bids, it doesn't, there's not, there's not an, it's consistent. It's just to think it's reflective of the market conditions we had. Uh, oddly enough, the one, so we have Anthony Biddle, who was low and is lower than they were the previous time, which reflects completion of some of the work, whereas the other returning bidder is actually higher. Notwithstanding completion of some of the work, higher than they were the other, the time before. So it's just, it's a different market right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, for Mr. Sacala, uh, Ms. Hall?
Dan, can you just clarify that, um, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time in property. But just for the public to clarify, this is not a cosmetic kind of project that we're doing, that there is an intent on protecting the building from water infiltration and things like that. Can you just expand on that for them?
Yeah, not only that, but it also addresses the ADA requirements around the entire building, which, which, which needed a lot of help. Um, there were lots of ADA issues around the existing building. So, um, yeah, we had water infiltration damage on doors. I mean, again, this, this project does go back a couple of years, but I don't think there was anything cosmetic about it. It was never, it was never looked at as a cosmetic project.
No, I'll add.
Oh, thank you.
I was just gonna say, I'll add it. It adds, um, some security to, uh, to the pedestrians coming out of the building and and traffic outside.
Thank you for clar-
And and the concrete work, again, it's, it's egress. I mean, Mark, some, there's also some work that involves steps and ramps up to the building as well, right, Mark?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Uh, other questions for, uh, for Davia on this particular project? Seeing no other questions, uh, thank you, Dan, and thank you, Mark, for, uh, uh, being with us here this evening. Uh, next on guests and scheduled speakers, we have the Student Performance Support, uh, Interventions, Dr. Walsh and Dr. Angstad. Uh, Dr. Walsh, just give me a second to bring the presentation up.
Okay.
And then just tell me when to progress on the slide, okay?
Sounds good. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm here with Dr. Angstad. And, uh, I wanna first thank all the building principals, counselors, reading specialists, curriculum supervisors. A lot of people are involved in pulling this data together. And tonight's presentation, um, will go over not necessarily student-specific data and performance data. As I mentioned last week, that'll come at a later meeting because we are collecting mid-year, uh, student performance data. So we'll be sharing that, um, at a future ed committee and board meeting. But tonight is really just the other side of of our student data. We're looking at, uh, various issues and various topics that we would like to share with you tonight. So, Dr. Zerby, can I have the next slide? So what you'll see tonight in our presentation is we'll focus on attendance and truancy. And we'll define that as we go through the presentation. We'll share with you grades and progress reports for students in five to 12. And we'll also be sharing, um, students that are involved in tier interventions at our elementary, at our four elementary schools. We'll also be talking about some of those improvement plans and meetings to keep students engaged. And for those students who are considered truant and, um, habitually absent, uh, using some of our resources within the district. We'll also talk about the child study referral process that we're continuing to use in a virtual setting, as well as the, the in-person setting. Um, we'll talk what reading and math support looks like, as well as SAP referrals. SAP stands for Students Assistance Program. And then we'll also be talking about how counseling and mental health services are provided, uh, as an ongoing and needs basis for our students. Next slide. So I'll start with the first slide, um, as we have our seven schools broken down. So I'll explain the first one. And then as we go through the subsequent slides, um, I won't spend as much time, um, as you, the board does have this presentation. Um, so first thing we looked at is we compared students from all of 2019, 20 school year. That includes, um, the, the famous middle of March pivot to, uh, virtual learning. They're included in the data as well as the, um, 2021 school year students year-to-date. So, um, as our definition of what is considered a student at risk for grades, it's less, uh, less than or greater to, a less than or equal to 60%. So last year we had 101 students. And this year we have 79 students year-to-date. Um, for our attendance and truancy, we define attendance and truancy as concerns for students who are habitually late, habitually absent, um, unexcused absences. So last year there were 146 students and this year to date, there are 105 students. And again, it's important to those, those are students, um, not necessarily incidents. So when we talk about what interventions and supports, the first thing we look at is when we have students who need, um, who have excessive absences or truancy, oftentimes we develop a truancy elimination plan. We gather parent and guardian feedback, get input. It's a team meeting. Uh, last year we had 42 plans developed and meetings held about, um, recurring attendance issues and truant issues. And this year we have 52. So again, it's not unexpected. Students may be having their cameras off more often, not checking in. So what can we do to reduce and ultimately eliminate some of those issues? Um, we talk about child study referrals. So our child study process does vary at the different levels. But really, it's a process in which students are referred to, usually starts with the counselor, some type of support service that are, that's happening at the school. And it can be for academic concerns, social, emotional concerns, um, any type of concerns that are brought through, usually starting with the school counselor and then a team meets to discuss these students. So last year there were 129 student referrals and this year to date is 98. And again, that was as of the beginning of the, the, uh, year in January. Student Assistance Program referrals, last year we had 68 and thus far we have, uh, 39. Counseling and Mental Health Services, we had 115 referrals and this year we have 111. And again, that could be for any type of outreach and support. And our REACH program, um, which you're familiar with, which we are just implementing at the high school this year, we've had 20 referrals thus far. Um, keeping in mind, when you look at our total enrollment at the high school currently as of January 1st, it was 1,544. Um, so keeping that number in mind for the number of referrals and number of students that may be absent, um, truant or, uh, having grades that we consider struggling. Um, you know, that kinda puts that in perspective, 79 out of 1554, 1544 and 105 out of, um, 1544. So when you look at those numbers in the grand scheme of things, um, you know, I think the data sometimes can speak for itself. Next slide, please.
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, I'm just to interrupt real quick, just to make sure your 1920 numbers are complete, full-year numbers, right? So you're, you're comparing a year-to-date number versus the full year 1920.
Yes, because we don't, that is.
You don't, you didn't track it midway year last year, I understand. I just wanna make sure that's clear for everybody.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, this, Dr. Angstad.
If we go to the next slide too, I just wanted to add that it's important to remember that these numbers, the same students may be in, referenced in the same categories. So students who are truant may also have been in the grades below a 60. The same is true for students who are getting the supports. You may see the same student referenced in all four of those areas or five of those areas listed below. So we aren't talking about adding the numbers together, but they may be the same students in each category.
And I don't, I know we, I just wanted to, that was what Mr. Winters asked, was the same thing I wanted to ask. So it doesn't mean that we expect to double that number, like for SAP referrals, because SAP referrals are a big deal. So it's not that we expect that number to go, you know, to 132, but I guess Paul's asking, you know, because, I mean, it could double is, I guess, in certain areas, not that it would, but just something to, something to keep in mind. And I certainly don't hope that, um.
As we're looking, um, it may be helpful, as we're looking at the numbers of the students for the first marking period with the grades and the attendance and truancy, we're trying to be proactive and say, what other supports can we put into place for those students? So as part of a truancy plan meeting, um, we may be saying, let's refer them to SAP. Let's get them some extra help. So the numbers are high, but they could be reflective of the same student being in all of the categories. Right? Just, and that's the same throughout K to, you know, K to 12, okay?
Do we have baseline for, and I, I mean, when I say baseline, I mean, do we have numbers from 2018? And I know it's.
Ms. Ms. Perdue, Ms. Perdue, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your volume is very low. And, uh, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Some people might have trouble hearing what you're saying.
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
It's better, but not, not good.
Okay. I just wanna know if we have numbers for 2018, even if we are really looking to compare.
I care, she's asking for 2018, 2019 school year numbers.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have that tonight, but we can certainly make that available, um, and look at that as well. We can go back and and look at some of our archived data. All right, next slide, Dr. Zerby. So as we look at our Cola Middle School, the, it's pretty much the same, um, categories that we listed for high school. We have, um, grades less than 60% again in that second column. It's just the first marking period grades because we have not yet completed. We're just wrapping up our second marking period this week, our actually first semester. Um, so you can see those numbers there and interventions and supports. We have, again, student attendance plans, child study referrals, those student assistance program referrals, um, counseling, mental health services, as well as our REACH program, which was at the, uh, our Cola School last year and as well as the 2021 school year. Um, and you can see we have interventions in place. And as Dr. Angstad mentioned, some students may be in several categories. We may have a student who's struggling, um, in a subject area. It may also have, may lead to some truancy issues and they therefore would be referred to child study or perhaps some of the REACH program or counseling and mental health services. So, um, you know, when. um, you know, when we, when you look deeper into this, there are students who are in multiple, as we say, buckets and multiple categories. Next slide, Dr. Serry. So we now move to Skyview Upper Elementary, our fifth and sixth grade. Again, they do letter grades at that school, um, at the Skyview School, again, using the same criteria as we did for our Cola and the high school. You can see the comparison data of 37 and 54. Same thing with truancy, attendance and truancy, 46 versus 32. Um, again, those interventions and supports, those truancy elimination plans, the student attendance and improvement plans, four versus 13. Um, we have the instructional support teacher and child study referrals, the instructional support team. Um, that's what they use at that Skyview. We have reading support and math support, um, offered to students who maybe identified it as either a tier two or tier three student, same thing with math. There have been no SAP referrals to date this year as well as last year. There's counseling and mental health services numbers. And again, that's the counselors, um, at the elementary school, at the upper elementary school, operate in a different way than, let's say, the high school or middle school. So those numbers are indicative of, um, any type of, of individual services, group services, um, group meetings, and the REACH program at Skyview this year, because we did not have it last year, has six students. So when you look at those numbers, um, and you extrapolate them, you can see the differences between 1920 and currently the 2021 school year. Next slide, Dr. Serry. So the next four slides will talk about the four elementary schools. So again, I'll explain a little bit because it's a little different than the, uh, Skyview and our Cola and the high school. But when we have our tier interventions, what that is, is that's our RTII, our MTSS model. That's our tier two and tier three students. Um, we have three tiers of students for reading support. And so those students who are considered a tier three are considered at risk. Those who are considered tier two are slightly at risk. So our tier three interventions, um, we blitz them with a lot more supports than we would, let's say, for a tier two student, although they are also receiving supports. So when we talk about that, you'll see when I go down the chart here, um, the 122 last year versus the 110 this year. Um, not a whole lot of attendancy and truancy issues this year at, when you look at our call, I mean, that Arrowhead Middle Elementary School, um, same thing with our attendance improvement plans. That's as a result of not having the attendance and truancy issues. But if you look at the reading support, that 69 number as well as the math support, that 41 number, when you add those two up, that's where we get our tiered interventions of 110. So that top number of 110, when broken down is 69 students who are receiving either tier two or tier three reading services, and the math support, which again, could be the same student. Some students receive math support, some students receive reading support. Um, we did not disaggregate the data down to that level. The building principals obviously have that information, but from a top side view, you can see those numbers as compared to last year. There have been no SAP referrals, and counseling and mental health services, again, 49 to 41, and the REACH program is not at the elementary level. Next slide. Again, taking a top side view of, of the tiered interventions for Eagleville, um, five last year in truancy and attendance, same thing with three. So when you add 110 this year to the 51 math support students with the reading, that's where you come up with the number 161. Just a reminder, there may be students who are in both categories, not necessarily just one. No SAP referrals, um, counseling, mental health services, again, outreach with the counselor, um, school psychologist may be involved, but those numbers are 42 versus the 47 at Eagleville. Next slide. Again, Woodland, taking a look at the two numbers, 124, 136. Just a reminder, that's the number that's coming from the reading support and math support. Um, again, no attendance issues, SAP referrals, counseling services provided by the school counselor. Um, and again, uh, then there's no REACH program at the elementary school. Last school. Orcester, again, you can see there's been no attendancy issues, no, so therefore there's been no, um, improvement plans as a result. Uh, 116 is the result of the 78 students in reading support and 38 students in math support. There have been no SAP referrals, 40 counseling services to date, um, for students who are outreach, who need outreach or some type of mental health services, and no REACH program. Next slide. So based on our discussions, we were talking about what we can do to support our students who may need some academic support. So we are going to replicate something very similar that was offered in the fall to our students, this academic and counseling support. Um, it may require students who may need just organizational homework support. It'll be providing opportunities for individual and small group. Um, it will be inverse, in person and virtual for those students who prefer to remain virtual and can't come into school for a variety of reasons or unable to, we're offering two platforms. We will offer it after school during hours, um, that'll be listed in the next slide, but we have after school and evening hours being offered, um, a few days a week for those students, again, by appointment only, and it's for any and all students. We're, we're opening up to any child, any parent who may be interested in getting some extra support, um, for whatever, um, their targeted areas might be, or concerns that they might have. The elementary, um, it's really important, we're going to be providing the review of those ICAN statements as we are a standards-based reporting system now. So our students, as they progress across the standards and those continuums, those students who may not have reached, um, their ICAN statements, who have not reached their proficiency goals yet, they'll be provided that opportunity, um, as well as parents who just have some concerns regarding organization or, um, they just need some counseling outreach. Secondary will provide students to just need support above and beyond the classroom teacher. Um, you can see there, we'll be offering for our budgetary considerations, supplemental contracts for offering it to support staff as well as our professional staff. And if needed, we will also utilize the STS substitute service. Um, the important thing is the grant funding. We'll be using the ESER grant funds that we have, um, to support this program. That's one of the, the criteria that we can use to support, um, supports for our students. And again, we're planning on running that for approximately 15 weeks, starting in March, running through the end of the school year, running through middle of June. Next slide, Dr. Serry. So just broken out, um, you can see we're, we're offering it for the elementary, um, as well as middle school and high school. So we're offering four teachers per day approximately, seven buildings, three days a week. We're looking at Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um, two hours per day. Um, you can see the teachers, they're, they're hourly rate, and we're offering it for 15 weeks. Um, teachers could be assigned to small groups, up to 10. Again, through appointment only, there'll be a scheduling assistant that will allow parents to register ahead of time, so we can actually plan and work with the teachers on exactly what their targeted needs might be and areas of interest. Um, we are looking for a site coordinator who can help schedule, um, and get confirmation of these appointments with parents and guardians. Again, at each building, so our seven buildings, offering again, three days a week, two hours a day. And again, it could be, um, someone who'll be really ensuring that the health and safety protocols are followed, will help with the supervision and arrival of students, um, making phone calls, outreach. Um, so that's what the site coordinator will be. So really, we'll have five adults involved at each building. And just know that we need to be flexible because, um, obviously it will be dependent on staffing. It also would be dependent on interest of, of parents. Um, so we will certainly promote it. We're asking the building principals to, to mention this in their newsletters, and we'll be having communication coming from, uh, the district office to remind parents of this opportunity. If it's approved by the board, um, will be offered to all those students, any student who's interested in need. Next slide. We'll just touch a little bit on what our summer interventions are going to look like. We don't really want to spend too much time on that. Right now, we'll be bringing something forward later on, um, what our summer interventions look like. But that will be more about targeted students, students who, um, are eligible and in need of some type of supports, academic supports, or some type of emotional support. Uh, we'll be using, that will be very specific data-driven, about mid-year data, end-of-year data, performance data, looking at the inning of the year to the end of the year, looking at our tiered students, obviously looking at grades and report cards, um, not forgetting that it's not just about grades, but it's also about the social, emotional. We will be offering it by invitation. Um, again, we 're looking at offering, if everything goes well, in-person and virtual options, so parents have a choice. We'll be offering our budgetary, um, considerations for you as well, looking at offering it to support staff and professional staff using STS as needed, being very specific and targeted with our interventions and resources. We'll be looking at materials and then obviously transportation as needed. But ultimately, the grant funding will be used again for those ESER federal grant funds that were allocated to every district. Next slide. Dr. Angstad.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. So something new that we are doing this year is something called COVID compensatory services, and it is truly, um, a formula base that we have to follow. Um, and eligibility is based on recruitment data. So there are a lot of different phases of this throughout the year, collections of data, looking at the data, having IEP teams review, um, the students' progress. And then, once we identified the students that, um, are eligible for the recruitment instruction, that is required to be, um, uh, offered for six weeks. So the students that you see on the side where it says the 52 students on the side, the 19 at elementary, Skyview is nine, our Cola has four, and the high school has 20. Those students will now go through six weeks of recruitment instruction, and the IEP teams are involved in that. They look at the types of goals the kids are going to be working on, the skills that they're going to cover during that period of time. And then data is collected one more time. At the end of that, we will then know who is eligible for the compensatory services, which will be offered over the summer. This is not in connection with extended school year. That is a separate program. Eligibility for that is a totally different, um, formula that we use. Uh, participation is not required, but it will be offered very similar to extended school year. And as I said, this is not finalized yet, but we will continue to keep you posted on the number of students who will be eligible. Uh, we will also be, we received a grant for some compensatory services, um, in the amount of $67,000, and we can also use the ESER funds to support this programming over the summer. So more to come on the COVID compensatory services.
Next slide. So our next steps, um, of course, we're seeking approval, um, for your consideration and review. Um, and hopefully we can get this thing started in, in March. We'll tour on for 15 weeks, our after-school student support program. Again, we'll be, our hope is, next step is to advertise for staffing for the after-school student program, um, working with Mr. Regina's office. Um, supplemental contracts will then appear in a future board agenda, some in February, um, some may appear in March. And as Dr. Angstad just talked about, we'll be moving forward with a plan later in the spring about those targeted interventions, which will be data-driven, you know, I'm using multiple measures of data, not just one or two assessments, but looking at many data points to determine eligibility for those targeted interventions for our summer academy as well as our extended school year. Um, so that is the presentation in a nutshell for what's happening with our student supports, um, and offering a program for our students are, who are interested in, as, we're not going to exclude any student here, because we want to make sure we're offering it to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Thank you, Dr. Angstad. Any questions for, uh, Dr. Angstad and Dr. Walsh? Ms. Reese?
Before my question, which is a quick question, I just want to say, and this is something I was going to brought up in New Business, this is amazing. Um, this is amazing. Right now, and I'm not knocking where I work, we're offering a homework club. This is just amazing. And I, what I was going to say at New Business to Ms. Kelly was, I think all school districts are afraid to tout, to toot their own horns right now, right? Because nobody's happy with schools right now. Every, you know, everybody wants everybody in all day, every day, and they didn't want last March to happen. So I think every school district is a little bit afraid to do anything rah-rah, because everyone's feeling angry or upset or just depressed, whatever you want to call it, because of COVID. But this is an example of something we should be very, very proud of at Methacton, and I don't know who wouldn't, um, approve it. Um, and it even brings up just the REACH program that many people may not be aware of if they weren't watching board meetings previously, uh, before the pandemic, that we have this amazing, amazing, very progressive mental health program. So anyway, about that, and I just would say that we need some rah-rah. We need some rah-rah, because there is a lot to be proud of for this district, and I think we, we forget that sometimes. I mean, you know, as much as my one child struggles, has been struggling, my other two aren't. And I'm not, it's not about my kids, but I'm just saying, you know, um, my ninth grader, they lost terribly, by the way, but she's out playing basketball for school, having a great time, and had an awesome career day today. Um, you know, and so I think that we're forgetting all the good things because we're trying to fix the bad things. So anyway, thank you for this. My only question, I know you said you were about to put it out to staff if it's approved, but have we put out feelers? Because, um, I just am concerned, you know, for staff, you know, at some buildings, are we worried that we, and I know we, some, we might not have the interest by some. We might think, you know, we might be hearing, my child needs help, my child needs help, but then when it comes to it, maybe they're not able to come, or maybe they don't think they need as much help or whatever. So our, so one is, my one question is, are we worried about finding that, that staff that's available and with, um, not just, not even willing, but available? Like, they worked all day, now they're going to add two hours to their day. Um, and also, if it's not as popular as we think it's going to be, and I'm not saying it isn't, but I know when I offer homework club to some of my students and parents, they're like, I'm not going to homework club, you know? So anyway, those are my two questions.
Yeah, we, we have offered, uh, we have started those discussions. We don't want to put, put too much effort into this, pending your approval, um, but we have had preliminary discussions with our staff, and there is some interest. Um, obviously, when the posting goes up, that'll generate some more discussions at the building level, um, through my department as well as the building principals, trying to recruit, um, some of those teachers who may be interested in supporting students, whether in a virtual setting or in person. So yes, we've had, had some preliminary conversations.
And what if it isn't as popular as we think it's going to be? I mean, I guess, I guess that's okay. So if we think, if we were thinking 40 kids are going to want it and only 10 kids want it, who cares? It's still offered. Is that how we're kind of looking at it?
Meaning no child, no pun intended, but no child left behind. We're offering it to anyone who's needed, and, and the need may be looked through a different lens for every family member. So that's why we're throwing the net out to anyone who's interested. It could be for counseling, it could be for organization, it could be for academic support. Um, you know, what that, how that's defined will really be on a case-by-case basis with the parents, but we're turning nobody away.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Ms. Aubrey Larsonis?
Thank you, Dr. Walsh and Dr. Angstad for that presentation. Um, while I agree with Ms. Reese that it's wonderful that we are, are developing these programs, um, I, I do find it troubling though to see what our numbers of, of struggling students look like, um, particularly at the K to eight level. Um, I would be curious, and I, I don't know if this is feasible at all, if there's any way that we could reach out to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit or, um, some other smaller organization within the county to see if we can compare any of this data with other districts. Um, I think it's, it's no secret that, um, that COVID is affecting education across the country. So I, I'm certain that other districts are struggling in some way as well, but I think it will help us in terms of targeting our means of addressing the situation, if we can determine, is this a Methacton problem or is this an education-at-large problem? Um, so I, I would like to, to see if we can find that information. Um, the other thing is that if we do get to a, a situation where we need to start, um, I guess, targeting or, or scaling back, um, you know, maybe we don't have the staff available, um, to Ms. Reese's point. I mean, we know that they're working harder than ever. Um, we may not have staff who are available to, to fully staff this program the way we'd like to. So, um, if we need to develop some sort of a hierarchy of needs for this, um, I would like it if we could also cross-reference children who are struggling this year versus children who were struggling last year, because I think that will help us to also identify, um, you know, if a student was struggling last year and they're struggling this year, I think that that's one set of solutions. Um, if it's a student who has historically done well and is suddenly struggling this year, I think it's a different set of solutions. So I would hope that, um, and that's something that we could look into as well. Um, and if we could get a, a system in place for targeted communication to children who, um, are struggling and staying virtual, because I think that not having them in face-to-face is going to make it more of a challenge to, um, to address their needs. And also, if we could get, um, a targeted communication or a personal phone call, um, to any students who are identified as struggling and who don't voluntarily sign up. And I, I don't mean it as like a heavy-handed, you, you bring, need to bring your kid in for this program, but, um, to just try to work with those families on an individual level to see if there's some other need that isn't being met. Maybe there's a transportation issue, maybe there's a scheduling issue, but, um, if that's something that we can do as well.
If I could just add to that, um, we have been offering to parents, especially in truancy meetings, the opportunity to come in person, um, as those truancy meetings are occurring. So we are looking at kids on a case-by-case basis in terms of what other supports. Um, you can't force a student or a parent to bring their child in, um, it's COVID, but we do put it out there. We do offer that extra support for them and have been doing that.
That's great, Dr. Angstad. Thank you for sharing that. Um, and then one final thing, I know that the, the heavy lift was in preparing this presentation in the first place. Um, I would like if we could get, um, in, in our board memo on a monthly basis, um, monthly updates on these numbers so that we can see how we're tracking, to Mr. Winter's point. on these numbers so that we can see how we're tracking. To Mr. Winter's point, you know, we're looking at year-to-date numbers versus an entire school year. And I, I want to see how we continue to track and, and hopefully, I, I'd love to see some of these numbers plateauing now that we're, we're bringing more, hopefully bringing more children in, in person and offering these services. So thank you, and I'm, I'm really happy to hear that we are developing a way to help hopefully alleviate these problems.
Thank you, Ms. Aubrey Larsonis. Ms. Cancril?
Well, thank you. No, I agree with Ms. Larsonis. You know, I had attended, like I had presented, I had done a write-up from the U.S. Department of Education two weeks ago about how to handle this pandemic and this COVID slide. And they did say they had studies both in two major universities showing that that has happened throughout the country. But for us to truly target what's happening in Methacton and seeing what our needs are will help us to really be aggressive and really focus on the individual students to really improve. So I, I think it's important that when I did quick math, for us to just be honest and, and really focused with kids, whether these families are choosing to do virtual, to really have conversations with them about the supports we have. Because if you look at any student in the, that's 60 and below in the high school, that's 5% of the population. Our COLA is 21%, Skyview is 7%. When you look at tier three interventions, overall, we have Arrowhead at 30% the students, Eagleville at 43%, Woodland at 30%, Warsaw at 30%. These aren't small numbers where these kids are requiring some interventions, individual mastery interventions that need to be done. So one of the biggest things that the U.S. Department said is really to be systematic with the supports, to really provide individualized programming so the kids can master. So I really appreciate the programming that we're going to be doing. I think it's important to present the teachers with this information too, so that then they have honest conversations with the parents of these students, that they know that these supports are here. And also for the teachers to know really where we are as a district, that we have so much more to work towards to get these kids back off, you know, get them off the COVID slide as they call it. So I'd really like you to talk to the staff to let them be aware of what you're presenting also. It's important for them to see the whole picture from the fact and have honest conversations with parents, letting them know the after-school program, the summer program. And then maybe if they can attend in person, if that's what they feel comfortable with. The one thing I would like to see, that's only one thing that I would love to see is technology programming. So if the, if they don't feel comfortable coming in, providing some kind of individualized programming where they could just do it through the website. So what we used, last year, we tried a program that wasn't very successful when we did the summer programming. EduCer, I think it was called, I forget the name of it, but something technology-wise that maybe we could do that. So maybe if they can't come in person or if they're, you know, they want to do things over the summer that would allow them to do mastering of skills on their own would be something I would love for us to further look at.
Yeah, Ms. Cancril, in terms of those, I'll call them more of like asynchronous slash practice programs that you're referring to, the technology type-based. I know the curriculum office is looking at a few of those. Any other questions, Mr. Wears?
Yeah, real quick, I'm following on Ms. Cancril's comments there. The one thought that certainly the numbers are troubling, but not honestly that surprising, I guess, and from, from the expectation. But there was a couple of things. I saw six in Skyview for the REACH, which was surprising. The number being relatively low, knowing that we haven't been in, so I understand. But the, the, it seems, and, and just a surprisingly low number. But I think the point I would make to Dr. Walsh and Dr. Engstad is to, Jen rattled off some statistics about percentages, but I, it'd be interesting to see if we can learn something among the variability of our schools about how certain things are, are handled and how things, if, if we have some variability, if certain areas are being identified more easily or less, or less reported, or you know, what, what are the differences? I'm sure the principals among the elementary talk among themselves all the time. But it, it, this is a little more factual based, based on types of interventions that are being put in place. So I think it's something that we can learn internally among ourselves also of best practice. So just a more of a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wears. Any other questions? Ms. Drummond?
I really just have more of a suggestion for your consideration, and that is to look at, look at the fall and look at the next school year and consider, you know, if there's still grant funding available, that we continue the Student Services Center. And just because there could be that the skills that the students are building on this year, you know, particularly like in math or those kinds of things, that maybe they're not, maybe there are some gaps in the skills going into next year and that a Student Services Center would be beneficial for, to, to hold in the fall if that's possible with the budget considerations.
Thank you. Good suggestion. Thank you. Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, I think almost all my questions were already answered. I guess the one question I do have is around some of the in-school supports that we have now. And maybe, I don't know, Chair or one of the principals might be better off to answer this. But you know, one, obviously, one of the more unfortunate situations we have, right, is when we have staff that goes out on short notice and we can't get a sub, right? We're pulling people in as substitutes in those classrooms. And oftentimes the available people are the reading or math support specialists. So when they're covering a classroom, obviously, some of those other supports aren't happening. Are, are we, are we seeing the, are, are we seeing the, the staff absences improve? Or how else are we, or how, because my, the, the right question really is, how are we preventing ourselves from using the, using our reading and support specialist so that a lot of, so that as much of this can happen in school as possible?
Yeah, it's a good question, Ralph, that I would say the latest move that we made on shifting a lot of our substitutes to the elementary level have certainly helped our efforts to not transit, move staff around. I'm not going to pretend that when we have quarantines and, and situations like that, we, we don't struggle. But as for our longer-term leaves and our sick call-outs, we've been able to cover those much better at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrette. Any other questions for Dr. Walsh or Dr. Engstad? Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Thank you, Dr. Engstad. Next on and the final presentation for this evening, we have Dr. Spewack. Dr. Spewack is, is, is going, is here this evening to talk about the, the, the return to, to workouts for the spring and fall offseason voluntary work arts. This is a presentation that he's, he's been in front of you a number of times. Not, not much has changed other than the fact that some of the, the sports in the, in the plan have changed. So Dr. Spewack?
Yes, thank you very much for having me tonight. As Dr. Zerby just mentioned, I won't go through a whole lot from this particular document because it's very similar to what you have already seen with regards to approvals in the fall offseason as well as the winter offseason for 2020. This would encompass the spring of 2021 sports as well as the fall of 2021 sports, similar to what was approved in the past. This would include volunteer offseason workouts leading up to the official PIAA and Pioneer Athletic Conference start dates for spring and fall. It would include the sharing of the ball in those sports that utilize a ball and would also include masking and distancing with no contact. So again, very similar to what we ended up with leading into this winter, where we allowed for the sharing of the, of the, of the ball, but no official contact. And as is the case with the winter sports that are going on in season right now, mask would be mandatory for all athletes and coaches at all times. Obviously, this is integral to the preparation for our, our spring athletes as they lead into the season, but also for our fall athletes as they go through their typical or as typical as possible offseason throughout this spring and, and into the summer. As was the case, just important to note, as was the case with our fall and winter approved workouts, this would be a work in progress if, if our situation were to change and we felt as though at the end of the spring or into the summer, that contact was appropriate or safe for the offseason, then certainly we would continue to, to analyze our current document and, and look at those different types of changes. But again, just to recap, this document, similar to the fall and winter, would, would include all spring sports for 2021 and all fall sports for 2021 as well.
Any questions for Dr. Spewack on this matter? Not seeing any, any questions. We have a question, Ms. Purdue?
Um, no, I guess it's probably a question, but that's a few act. I was just wondering with the fall and winter sports. Let me know if you can still, if you have an audio issue still.
Much better now.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering with the fall and winter sports, did you see any incidents or cases that we can attribute to COVID just due to those sports or any particular sports that we should be worried about with going into the spring and fall season?
We, we, while we have had scenarios to deal with, with regards to whether it be COVID within a household or direct positive cases, we have not to this point, at least in my opinion, or what I've observed, to see any type of spread amongst team-to-team or amongst one team in, in particular. We have not seen the virus spread amongst our teams. But we have certainly had cases. We don't know for sure whether that would have been something that the athlete brought to practice from elsewhere or if it was something that, that was spread at, at practice. But nothing that leads me to believe that, that, that that has been a, a major issue for us in the fall or winter.
Ms. Cancril?
I just wanted to thank you for really working with the coaches, just seeing from the fall, having the athletics and activities allowed and following all these precautions. I, I want to say I'm very happy that Methacton as a board voted for these sports to continue. I heard from a couple of parents from juniors that they had actually early commitments to colleges in field hockey. So the rankings and recognitions that they were able to establish this season in the fall is phenomenal. So if you could just share it with the community, all these wonderful things that have, that these kids have had successes with for their future, that would be great. So I just want to say thank you and I look forward to a safe season as we continue. So.
Thank you, absolutely.
Any other questions for Dr. Spewack? Not seeing any other questions. Thank you, Dr. Spewack. And that ends the scheduled speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Moving on to reports, our committee reports will be added to the agenda online, so you can review them. North Monco, I'm sorry, Intermediate Unit, Ms. Reese.
No question, I was coughing, I'm sorry. But I'm sorry, what did you say? I was like having a coughing fit. Did you, MC IU commit, committee, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was just wondering if you had a report from the IU. I can come back to you if you.
No, no, I'm okay. I, I, I'm fine. The, we, MC IU meets tomorrow, so I do not have a report, but I'll real quick just go North Monco. Already said they had ended in testing. Just very importantly, there is a virtual, I'm sure if anyone, I'm sure the high school has shared this, but just in case, because things fall through the cracks sometimes, there is a virtual open house on February 4th at 5:30. You go on the, if you go to their site, right on the left, it says register. There will be tours, virtual tours, et cetera. So I would recommend anybody to look at that, please.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Ms. Drummond, did you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add. My notes are about the open house. They're hosting a skills competition virtually. They found out that that, you know, how they're going to do the NOCTI skills, the in-person skills for the curriculum, that it's possible to do those in person. And they also received a couple grants that they're going to use to shore up the main entrance. And that was, that was about it. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Moving on to our student board representatives, Serena and Nolan?
Okay, so I just have a couple of things about what's going on in the high school. So I know for AP tests, the window changed this year. You used to be able to sign up later, but it was originally now on the fall, but there is a late window. So if you haven't signed up for your test, you still can. And the PSAT was actually today for 10th and 11th graders. I did not take it. But I know that, I believe the freshmen had a career day and the seniors had kind of like workplace etiquette and financial literacy, stuff like that, and that was great. We learned a lot. And the speakers were really nice and really informative, so that was great. The first semester ends January 28th, which is really important. And I know that we're not doing midterms this year, but a lot of grades and final tests and projects are coming in. And that obviously gives the students of the high school a chance to decide if they want to go back hybrid or not. And then something great that's happening is the multicultural young activists are selling masks to support the Trevor Project, which if you don't know, it's a nonprofit organization that helps the LGBTQ plus teens, which I think is really great because that's just a lot of representation for the high school. And that's all I have.
Yeah, to add on to Serena, the new year has brought back winter sports, notably basketball, wrestling, indoor track and swim. Mr. Methacton is going to be virtual this year and signups are on the 2021 Google Classroom. And lastly, clubs such as Minithon and Key Club are starting Zoom meetings to meet with their clubs and committees. And Minithon is going to be announcing events soon to help raise money for pediatric cancer.
Thank you both. It's amazing to see how many things are able to transition into the virtual environment. I got to watch the Laramie project a couple of weeks ago that the, the student presentation of that, and it was just, the whole thing was virtual and it was amazing. We do not have a foundation report this month. So that brings us to communications. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you and a good evening, everyone. I am proud to report that our school community showed up in a big way to support students in need. The district hosted a donation drive for the Martin Luther King Day of Service on January 18th to benefit the Methacton Backpack Program. So many of you stopped by the high school and our COLA throughout the morning to drop off food and much-needed personal care items. And the donations are still pouring in. Thank you to our backpack program volunteers, Ms. Drummond, Ms. Winters and Ms. Coop for sorting and distributing the donations. And another special shout-out goes to our Methacton custodians who beautifully managed the volume of donations that came in during the drive. And other exciting news, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, the district hosted a groundbreaking ceremony on January 22nd to celebrate the start of construction for the new Arrowhead Elementary School. We will be posting a video of the event on the district's website shortly and we'll be creating a section on the website to house all of the updates related to the construction project. And one final item, January is School Director Recognition Month. It's a time when school communities take a moment to recognize the nine individuals who volunteer their time and talents for the betterment of public education. So thank you to the Methacton Board of School Directors for your service to the students, staff and families and community of the Methacton School District. In recognition of this special time and all that you do, you all should have received one of these. Each board member was presented, let's see if I can get it in the frame. Each board member was presented with a certificate of, a certificate of appreciation and a reusable coffee mug that's filled with Starburst candy, you know, just to give you a little jolt when these meetings run a little long. Each mug is personalized with a removable sign that has each board member's picture. It looks like this. And it has a little something on it that says, "The brightest stars are those who shine for the benefit of others." Thank you for your service to the Methacton School District. So hope you all enjoy these. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, and thank you to the wonderful Methacton courier who was out in the miserable weather today, making those deliveries. It was very much appreciated. Superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby?
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, assuming that matters that are on the agenda under Personnel are approved by the board, these advisements would these advisements would go into effect to help with the transition of the high school principal to the director of HR and for Dr. Gravenese to take over on a temporary basis. The position as listed, as well as Nicole Starsen filling in for Dr. Gravenese in the Special Education Department. And with Ms. Glass also filling in at the Special Education Instructor in Grade Six.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. And that brings us to public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks you to keep your comments to four minutes or less. The Board of Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. So just as a reminder, there is no question and answer during this time. So if you do have a question, please go ahead and pose it, but there will not be a direct answer at that time. We'll bring it up for discussion later in the meeting. So anyone who has pre-registered to speak during this time, please raise your hand and I can begin calling on people. Okay, Jessica Bradbury, whenever you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Before I, before I get started, I also need to ask that everyone, before you speak, if you could introduce yourself with your name and your municipality. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jessica Bradbury. I live in Lower Providence Township. I wanted to thank you again, Dr. Zerbi, for your quick adjustments to the very thoughtful and detailed plan that you covered during last week's working session to accommodate the board's request. Our children have been suffering due to a lack of in-person social interaction with their teachers and their peers. So I'm having a little bit of a hard time tonight seeing how the virtual Friday is actually going to be more beneficial to them than an in-person Friday. Since July, our enrollment across grades K through six has declined by 157 students. With our class size averaging about 20 students in that level, that's almost eight classrooms worth of students that have left because they're dissatisfied with the lack of leadership and the way the district has been operating. How many reasons have we cited year to date to justify delay, delaying the return to five days of in-person learning? In July, it was PPE shortages. In the fall, staffing shortages. And what's the reason now? And I'm asking that not to be facetious. I'm really not sure what is the reason that we are not going back to five days for all of our students. I hope it's not safety. CHOP has recently endorsed the return to an in-person education. Dr. Susan Coffin, a professor of infectious diseases at the University of Penn, said schools may be little islands of safety where the people who gather, if they gather in good conscience and committed to safety plans, can go about their day as safely as the community, but even more safely. Thank you very, very much, Dr. Walsh, for your data this evening. I've been asking for it and I really enjoyed seeing the data. Not that I enjoyed it because it wasn't very positive, but I think it's important that we see the data. And I'm looking forward to seeing the data that you plan to bring to the upcoming education meeting and meetings next month. And I'm, I'm just asking, maybe could we annualize tonight's data? So it gives us a little bit more apples to apples comparison to last year. The data did show what many of the parents have known, that our students are struggling and it's time to get them back to the classrooms full-time. We heard last week from Dr. Zerbi, the plan that outlined a full return of five days per week for students in grades K through six, and that is the plan that should be approved tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next I have Jim Malick. Whenever you're ready.
Hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much, Jim Malick, Worcester. I'm going to go with my, how I opened up last time. If a recall vote were legal in Pennsylvania, I would have circulated a petition days ago for you, Chair, or President Larsonis. You want, you want me to be more specific?
Is this relative to an agenda item?
Yeah. It's your management of the district and the back, back to school plan. Would you like me to be more specific?
If this pertains to an agenda voting item, then yes, please.
Yeah, it is. I think it's time you step down. Ms. Bradbury brought up a good point about the CHOP docs. Because I understand that you guys rely on the CHOP docs. I, I heard Dr. Zerbi talking about the CHOP docs. Do you, are you guys familiar with their stance on return to school in Philadelphia? Because I'm well within my rights to ask questions. You don't have to answer them. But in this situation, I'd suggest that maybe you should give us an answer. Because if the CHOP docs, your source of information, is suggesting that the Philadelphia School District go back to school, can you explain to me why you aren't doing the same thing? Or do you think you know more than the CHOP docs? Is, is that why you won't go back? Can you answer that question for everybody? Because you talk about kids struggling. I hope you know that the reason the kids are struggling is because you won't let them go back to school. You and your board. Seems to me like everyone else has got the idea that, hey, maybe being in school is a good thing. Not only is it safer, but it's better for the kids educationally. Is there any reason why you can't see what other people see? Is it just fear of making a mistake? I mean, what is it? Can you tell me that one? How about this? You guys seem to put the blame for not going back full-time to school on the teachers. And the teachers don't want to teach and you can't fill the slots, so you can't bring the kids back. Is that your position? You're going to blame the teachers for, for your situation? Because see, me personally, I blame a lack of leadership, starting at the top with you, Madam President. I, I don't blame the teachers. Are, are you guys blaming the teachers? Is that, is that your position for why you won't go back? Can you still hear me?
I can hear you.
You hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
So you refuse to answer the question?
Dr. Malik, as I stated at the beginning, it's not a question and answer period.
Well, maybe for you it's not, but for me it is. You can't answer a simple question from members of the public? I mean, who? When did you elevate yourself to the level of like a dictator? You know, the public needs answers for these questions and you just sit up there and you guys all feel sorry for yourselves. You know, we need some rah rah.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Yeah, all right, God.
Just to clarify, because there seems to be some confusion, we have never entertained a back and forth or question and answer during the public comment and board action items. There are nine members of the board, and if we responded to every question that was posed during the public comment period, I don't know that we'd ever get to the rest of the agenda. So we do our best to address the questions as they come up during the agenda. Anyone else? Let's see, Greg Young. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, Greg Young, Worcester. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Great. Wanted to say a few words tonight in support for the in-class instruction vote. We know there's a lot of support for in-class instruction. Many people on this call are anxious to hear the results of this vote. We hear from school board members, most attendees, that what we all want is a safe return to school. Leaders, we need information and data to help us make decisions. Fortunately for us, we have local data from other schools and districts that have successfully opened within school instruction, some since the beginning of September. What did they do to succeed? We know that they were successful because they had a solid health and safety precaution plan in place to keep everyone safe. They have response plans for when one student, one teacher, one class tests positive and they keep moving forward. Sometimes we let emotions control our decisions instead of just letting it guide them. If you feel like the county's COVID numbers are spiking in the district, go get the available data to help you meter those feelings. They are trending down. I checked Montgomery County's positive COVID metrics today. Every municipality in this area, Lower Providence, Collegeville, Worcester, has a positive, positive, a COVID positive rate between 0.1 and 0.2%. For those that have problems working with decimals like me, that's 100 to 200 out of every 100,000 people. The teachers, we know the teachers are working very hard. We know they're being asked to grind, keep pushing forward, but who isn't? Every parent, working adult, combination of both, we're all doing our best to get through this situation and keep our heads above water. We're all in this and we're doing whatever we need to make it work. I know their summer months, their vacation months are going to be very much needed this year. For emotional feelings, my emotional feelings, I hope it's this way for everyone on this call, or for how this affects the children. I can't say this enough times. The consequences and impacts of this shutdown on these children exponentially exceeds the risks of contracting COVID. From emotional trauma to diminishing, diminishing academic performance for many students. Many of these children are apathetic about school, going through the motions, completely disengaged. Sure, some are excelling, but I think the former is more common than the latter. We should be embarrassed with how this timeline for this plan was put together. These kids deserved way more than what we gave them. Senior years destroyed. Lower grade students glazed faces on Zoom, learning very little without major parent intervention. And we go slow with a paralysis by analysis process of considering our options. It's no surprise that tonight's numbers show struggling children are very high, looking at partial year compared to a full year. Important support services, social support services, especially for our vulnerable children, have been dismal. I think our first problem was we took an all or nothing approach to this for so long and we hit nothing but roadblocks. We obviously had more options because here we are looking at other options. I think our second problem was we focused too much on everyone's feelings and personal situation. There isn't a solution to every situation, but it felt like we didn't have a plan on how to address these eventual issues. We're not unique. We just have differences in leadership across districts that were prepared to tackle these scenarios. We now have a plan and again, with the primary focus on the kids, we need to do everything we can to help these kids get back in the classroom. Five days a week preferred, but the plan is what it is for now. I'm asking the board to make the obvious choice, the common sense choice, the choice for the support of the children above everything else to help these kids back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next I have Lisa Brady. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, Lisa Brady, Lower Providence. Um, I just wanted to talk to the part of the plan that, for the high school, which really at this point, the plan is everything stays the same, but I was happy to see that for seven to 12 that there is a to be determined once the K to six kind of gets rolling. But as most of you know, because I know a lot of you do have high schoolers, the numbers at the high school are just sad. There's one, two, maybe three kids in a class. And I think we all know that being in class is the better way to learn. It's the better way to teach. And that's really what we all want eventually for our kids to, to have that. And for kids to not be taking advantage of that opportunity, I think we need to, to, you know, ask them. And I know Dr. Sergini has said, he's been asking the students and, you know, the main reason on the surface is, well, I'm not going back because my kid, my friends aren't going back. Well, why aren't those friends going back? And I think I would encourage the administration to ask the kids in an actual survey. When we send out the survey that says, are you staying virtual or are you coming in hybrid? The question needs to be, and why? I can speak to, you know, my personal experiences and, and kids that I know that I think a couple of the issues that need to be looked at is, one, kids are saying, well, I get to sleep in. One issue that Methacton has not addressed is the sleep times. And right now that is so far on the back burner, but I think needs to be put on the radar that the start school later movement is important. And it's, you know, we talk about our kids' health and that's important. So I think, you know, kids not being able to get out of bed, that's not something we can fix this year. But I think the disparities in the cheating, teachers can only control that so much. And making sure that we understand why the kids aren't coming back and we're, we're doing everything in our power to encourage them to come back. Once we feel, you know, as the numbers keep going down and all these precautions have been put in place to make a safe environment for our high schoolers. Second, I just want to say from the Suck Dr. Sergini, he's going to be sorely missed at the high school. He's done a great job in, you know, my opinion, and I hope that he gets to stand on that stage at graduation. A lot of these kids have had him as their principal in kindergarten at Eagleville, and I think it would be great if he could be up there to, to congratulate those kids as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Next I have Joe Rittenhouse.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. My name is Joe Rittenhouse, Lower Providence. I, I kind of want to keep it short because I think there's a lot of people really anxious to see the outcome of the vote. I think everyone's very cautiously optimistic at the moment, and I think that's wonderful. I just wanted to say thank you, Dr. Zerbi. I'm actually really impressed that the time was not pushed back and it was kept for February 8th. And I genuinely think people should be commended for that. Like I think that's truly something I was worried about last week and you spoke directly to it. So thank you. Yeah, I, I think that there's a ton of questions that have to be asked about the, why the numbers are so bad for where they are. And we, a kind, a time will come for that, but I, I think everybody's, you know, bated breath, kind of looking forward to see the board's vote. And, you know, I just want to say I totally support it. I think that it's a good decision. I think that you guys have a great opportunity here and I'd be very happy if you took. So we'll have time to talk about all the stuff surrounding the outcomes, the truancy, all, everything related to it after the fact. But just specifically on that vote, I just wanted to say that it's like now or never kind of thing, and people are excited. So I, I really hope you consider it. Secondly, just a side tangent, I just want to say that for Dr. Sergini, an absolute wonderful person. I, that was actually part of, when he was moving to out of district to a different position, I worked with him. He asked me to come in and speak to the people that were hiring him and it was a nice little luncheon. Thank you for the food at the time. But it's one of my memorable moments of Sergini and I genuinely support whatever he tries to do. And he is a spectacular human being in the district and I wish him the best of luck with whatever he does. And I hope you, as a board, support him in any action he chooses to take. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. Next I have Ashley Patton.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, this is Ashley Patton from Lower Providence Township. I just had a quick couple of things to say. I wanted to say that I am also fully in support of the students going back, obviously in person as much as possible. I would also prefer a five day versus a four day, although I'm willing to compromise on that and understand the perspectives that were put forward today. But if there's a way to make it five day, I really hope that we can do that, even if it's not now, but eventually. I just, I was not, unfortunately, I was not surprised by the numbers that were presented to the board today regarding the students and, and this way that they're struggling, because I think we've been hearing on these calls since the day school started, the amount of parents and students that are struggling. I'm disheartened that it took for those numbers to hit us in the face almost six months later to tell us that this is where we are. I, I don't think, I think we have all really smart people on this board and in this community, and I don't think it should have taken those numbers to drive home how important it is for us to do this differently. So I'm hoping that instead of, I know we're going to have to react to these numbers now because of where, where we are and the decisions that have been made thus far throughout the year. And it's important to react to them, but I also want to be proactive about prevention moving forward as well. And so not only thinking about how are we going to react to these, but what are we going to do to prevent the next student and the next student? Because this, what's not, what's not in those numbers are the students who are right on the edge of being a part of those numbers. What's not in those numbers are the students who used to get 95%, they're now in the 75% range, so they're not in those numbers. What's also not in there are students who, like my daughter, who is completely thriving in this, but literally can't stand going to school and that. And that breaks my heart because the way that it's been set up and she's just kind of gotten over it. She, she loves her teachers and she's doing great, but she is just like, there's no point in going to school anymore. So that's what I'm worried about because I think that will have very long-term effects for our kids down the line when they hit high school and things like that. A year and a year of this is going to take a lot to recover from. So I'm hoping that we don't just focus on this reactionary, let's fix what the problem is now. But I hope we start to think about the proactive of what we're going to do to prevent all these other things that are going to happen. And I hope that we can start to look at where we are in the curriculum compared to where we should be. I'm no expert, so I don't know, but I'd love that data too, to say, hey, third graders are usually at this point, fourth graders are usually at this point, this is where we are in comparison. This is how we're going to catch them up. I think that's going to be a really important piece as well to make sure that they're successful in comparison to others' districts. And I also hope that we don't just compare ourselves to other districts saying, oh, I'm complacent with that because that's where they are too. I hope that we strive to be better moving forward because I think what we've learned throughout this year is waiting, what, to see what other districts will do has not put us in a good place. So that's all I'm going to have to say, but I'm really hoping we have a different approach moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Next I have Lucy Bove. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, am I coming out? Okay.
Yes, you are.
Okay, Lucy Bove, Lower Providence Township. Uh, many people have touched upon already the, um, seventh through 12th grade going back in. But I just want to reiterate that they have to go into, I'm glad that you're looking at K through six. But we are in a crisis with them right now. It is urgent that they get back in. And to have TBD as to when we might look at them going back and start thinking, that's just not good enough. I think maybe we can go ahead and give the teachers the antigen testing in the high school. This way they'll feel more comfortable going in. We do make, need to make it a priority. It's not okay. And these students are being left behind. So please, please considering, consider moving forward as soon as possible to get these kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bove. Uh, last I have Kelly Arnon. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, Kelly Arno in Lower Providence. I just have a few comments. First off, I'm really glad to hear about that assurance testing. Hopefully we'll get some concrete data about the situation in our schools. And along with the county and township data, we can use that to make some educated decisions and keep students and staff as safe as possible. Second, the supports that are going in for struggling students are great to see, especially since they'll be available to all students. One thing I did notice looking at the data comparisons is that the entire 2019, 2020 school year is being compared to just the first semester of 2020, 2021. We get a lot more accurate of a picture of where things actually stand this year. If we compared the first semester of last year, um, especially with how the end of last year kind of ended. If we compared the first semester of last year to just the first semester of this year, which unfortunately will likely be a little worse off than it appeared tonight, but would still at least give us accurate comparison. Because right now we're kind of comparing apples to oranges. Finally, I just had a few lingering topics that haven't really been explicitly addressed in the return to school plan. And I'm hoping we can get some clarifications out to parents before requiring a decision. First off, I'm wondering if any added precautions have been taken at Arrowhead. That building is not like the others, um, in the district with its lack of doors and lack of full walls. And I could be wrong, but thinking back to previous board meetings, I don't believe it was getting the same ventilation system upgrade that the other district buildings did. The situation there is just different than other buildings. And whether or not the uptick of cases that were there recently is a result of that situation is unknown. But have any considerations like plastic dividers for the tops of the walls where classrooms are not separated? Plastic curtains for makeshift doors and individual classroom air purifiers have been added or considered. Second, Ms. Drummond mentioned it already, but what kind of support will be in place for teachers? As far as I can tell, there's been no mention of any concrete plans at any public meetings, even though it's been brought up on quite a few occasions by board members. Many parents considering remaining online until April are concerned that the virtual students are going to be the minority and may inadvertently be placed on the back burner. Human nature will likely draw more attention to the in-person students and that's completely understandable. But how will the teachers be supported? Specifically how? Not just yes, we'll support them. What will be done to meet the needs of all students? Will there be additional staff brought in to help monitor what will likely be a very large in-person group while also monitoring a small virtual group? I've got four kids in K to six virtually this year. We haven't gone back yet. The teachers are doing an absolutely amazing job. We have zero complaints. But most certainly at the younger grades, it is extremely evident they could use more support. Not just, yes, we'll support you, actual support. It would help parents to make a fully informed decision in these next couple of days to know what support there's going to be for the teachers, which in turn will be for the students, whether they are virtual or in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arnon. Okay, and with that, we can move on with the rest of our agenda. Um, so first, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the suspension of Board Policy 006.2 with regard to the limitation of number of directors participating electronically? Drummond makes a motion. Thank you, Ms. Drummond. And sir, a second. Thank you, Ms. Can Crow. Comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes as attached for December 7th and December 21st meetings?
Winners.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Is there a second?
This is Ken Crow.
Thank you, Ms. Can Crow. Comments from the board? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Uh, now fiscal items, Mr. Bricker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, tax collector compensation per the attached resolution 21 dash 01, mileage reimbursement rate at the IRS new rate of 56 cents per mile. Two credit change orders for 2020 capital projects. For the 2021 capital project, you have the high school canopy and pad projects to approve Anthony Biddle Contractors, Inc. of Amber, PA, bid amount of $2,160,925 to carry out the high school canopy and pads project. For the Arrowhead construction, you have the approved the hills, horns of media PA quote, an amount of $34,638 to carry out the soils and concrete testing for the new Arrowhead Elementary Project. For Audubon Elementary Equipment and Furniture Auction to approve Aldiver Auction to hold the online auction in three phases for equipment furniture being stored at the Audubon Elementary School. And then finally, the 2021, 2022 proposed budget, approve the adoption of the Act One Resolution Number 21 dash O2 for the 2122 budget, which states that the school board will not exceed the Act One index.
Thank you, Mr. Bricker. Um. Does anyone want to take any of these fiscal items separately? All right. Well, then I will take a motion to approve the fiscal items A through J as listed. Thank you, Mr. Winners. Is there a second?
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any comments from the board?
Two quick ones.
Yes.
I'll let Drew go first as he's the finance chair.
Uh, I don't want to be nitpicky here with Mr. Bricker, but, uh, item J is the proposed preliminary budget, not the budget.
Sorry, yes, preliminary budget.
And Ms. Reese.
That goes perfectly into my first comment. My first comment is just because I think this is the fifth or sixth time I say this comment because people do ask me this all the time. And since we discussed it last week at around 11 or 11:15, people may not have heard it. Um, I, and I have gotten the question, I think, five times since then. Um, this does not mean we are approving a 3% increase. In fact, it means, I'm not going to say the reverse, but just for those new to the budget, because, um, I'm a reading teacher. So I like to spell it out for people, um, in, that are not in finance. We are, we are voting not to go above 3%, which is what Act One allows us to do this year. And over the next five months, we work on that budget to hopefully bring that number down. So that I like to say before I vote on it every year. And second, I just wanted to mention about the canopies. I have said this before, one of the reasons I switched from policy to property is I knew we were doing so much in property and I would not be able to stomach, um, voting for some of these high numbers without a lot of detail. And, um, we have gone back and forth on these canopies and the price, um, always took me back. Um, and I, and I had, uh, requested many times how, um, why they are necessary and everything. So I appreciate Mary asking that again, because in property, we have discussed it at length. Because when people see $2 million, it's a lot of money, but it is very needed to keep our building in shape. So we don't have to rebuild a building. So thank you, Mr. Bricker, for all of these finance.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other comments from the board or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Moving on to personnel items, Mr. Regina.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this evening we have a number of items for the board's approval. Uh, one item for a classified resignation of retirement. We have one item for the employment of an administrative position. Five items for an employment of classified positions. A number of these are replacements. Two, two of them are replacing, uh, two of the retirees of Diane Malin and Diane Seaburger in the district office. Uh, another is a replacement for the retirement of Ms. Mandia with the replacement of Ms. Rutledge um, in the hiring of the office assistant. So, uh, many of these are, three, three of those at least are replacements. Actually, I think all five of them are replacements, actually. Uh, we have one change of status for administrative. Three uncompensated leaves for professional staff. Three uncompensated leaves for classified staff. One sabbatical leave. Uh, and, and this sabbatical leave, again, that there's, there's two ways to take a sabbatical leave. One is a professional development leave. The other is for restoration of health, which we often call medical sabbatical. This is for a restoration of health. We have four supplemental contracts. Two of those are the updated sponsor list. We did this in the middle of the year. Many of the activities, or I shouldn't say many, some of the activities we could not do in the online environment. As we're approaching a more in-person environment now, we can start to do those activities again. So we're able to update the list to start those activities. And two of the stipends are for the interim promotions of Dr. Graveney's and Ms. Starson. We have two items for classified substitutes. And one attachment for the volunteer list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Um, we have a lot of issues or a lot of, uh, items here. So I want to make sure that I, I bundle them appropriately. So let's start with, um, items 11A and B, if I could have a motion to approve those.
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second?
McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Any comments from the board?
Just quickly, and I know we mentioned it last week, that, you know, um, uh, you know, that Dr. Sergini, we hate to see him leave the high school, but it's nice that he gets to now help the whole district. And, uh, I know I support this, but you know, it's always hard to, it's always hard to lose one. Luke, get someone gets a, a good thing for the district. It's, it's always hard. So, uh, thank him for his service, uh, at the high school and look forward to him at Farina.
Yep.
Any other comments on the resignations?
Oh, sorry. I
That's, that's okay.
I didn't realize it, it wasn't ABC. I apologize.
That's okay. It's just A and B for right now.
Well, and Carl, I know, uh, people missed it, but last week at 11, whatever, uh, Dr. Regina spoke very, I do not know Carl myself, so, but Dr., uh, Doc, uh, Mr. Regina just spoke very, very highly of, of Butch, so I wish him all the best.
Thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of, um, the resignations is posted?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Uh, now, can I have a motion to approve the appointment and contract of Dr. Sergini to the Director of Human Resources?
Winners.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Is there a second?
I guess.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Comments from the board? We already got you covered there, Ms. Reese. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, uh, Mr. Summers, do we need a roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. Navrat, were you, you were a no?
Yes.
And, uh, any other board members voting no? Uh, the vote's clear. It was eight to one.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, with the vote of eight to one, the motion carries. Um, for employment classified, if I could have a motion to approve items 11E, one, two, three, and five.
Winners.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Is there a second?
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Um, now may I have a motion to approve item 11E four? Drummond. Thank you, Ms. Drummond. And I'll take Mr. McGinnis for the second. Um, comments from the board?
Yes.
Can you scroll what that is if, because I just don't, yeah, oh.
So I would like to say I will be stating the vote on this particular item since the individual recommended to be hired for the office assistant position is my spouse. In accordance with the Pennsylvania Ethics Acts, prior to the meeting, I submitted a written memorandum to the board secretary that indicated my intention to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. Um, Mr. Summers, should I do this as a roll call as well or wait and see how it shakes out?
Yeah, I think you could just, uh, ask for obviously any, uh, in addition to the a's and nays, any abstentions?
Will do. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One, winners.
Okay, so with a vote of eight, zero, and one, that motion carries. Now I'll take a motion to approve the change of status for Melissa Gorla. So this is item 11G.
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Is there a second? Drummond. Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any comments?
Just that I know, uh, Melissa, uh, has worked, uh, Ms. Gorla has been the leader at Skyview for a very, for, for a long time. So I, I'm sure that'll be a big adjustment for that building. I hope, uh, they look forward to just, you know, something, sometimes, sometimes change is good. And I look forward to Ms. Gorla being in a different role. And I wish her the best and I wish Skyview the best in, uh, in their change.
There are definitely some shoes to fill there. Thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. And finally, I'll take a motion to approve the remainder of the personnel items. So that would be J, 11J through O.
Reese.
Okay, I'll take Ms. Drummond and then Ms. Reese with the second. Any comments from the board?
Uh, I have a question. Can you scroll to the very top of what we're going to, um, approve? Okay, um. Okay, so it's probably the, oh, it's, it's another one, but it doesn't matter. Um, uh, I had just had a question for Mr. Regina about, um, when you talked about medical sabbaticals. Um, and unfortunately, um, so yes, that one, thank you. You had, had mentioned summer medical, summer professional development and, um, you know, uh, that, that's totally fine. Can you, every time we do this, I think I ask you a question. Is there a limit to people's medical sabbaticals?
So a limit as to how many they can request, Ms. Reese?
Yes.
There, there is the, the sabbatical, all the sabbaticals are following school code. So typically there are certain restrictions. Um, there's a, they can only take one every seven years. So, and, and those sabbaticals, they can take a year's worth of a sabbatical, but they don't have to take it. but they don't have to take it consecutively. They have a two-year period to take each of those semesters if they want.
Okay, and then since the leaves, the federal or state leaves ran out, do we expect more of these or how are we handling the staff that cannot work because they have a medical condition?
Sure. Not everyone is eligible for a medical sabbatical just due to their time and maybe they have taken one in the last seven years. The medical sabbaticals are restoration of health sabbaticals. So there are some restrictions that we look at. We, and I would say that we probably have to analyze those even a little bit more strictly than we do our normal leaves. But
And then what if it's not a sabbatical? Like what if someone can't work, so they're taking a leave? How does that work?
They could take, if they have sick leave and they have approved physicians now, they could certainly go on sick leave. The other option is uncompensated leave. And the uncompensated leaves by board policy are, they have to select that for either a one semester or a one-year term. And it maximizes it one year. So as an individual goes through all the leaves, the uncompensated leave is the last one that we can offer before an individual may have to certainly unfortunately part with the district if they continue to take leaves.
And then one last question, I promise, I'm sorry. I hope Dr. Sergini is watching to practice for all my questions about HR. So if, for example, you have a hardship, like I know at my, my school district, the local union has a sick bank. So let's just say somebody has used up all their sick time. And, but they need a leave. Does, does our MEA have a sick bank that they?
They do, yes.
Their colleagues with?
It's controlled by MEA, totally. We don't have much control over there.
Okay. You just have the control that someone gives their sick day or sick time to that bank?
That's correct.
Thank you. I just, thank you for answering all those.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Curriculum and programs, nothing for this evening. I think Dr. Walsh has done enough this month anyway. Policy, we have eight policies up for first reading and then seven that are up for a second reading and thus an approval this evening. May I have a motion to approve the seven policies as listed?
Mary Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Is there a second?
Drummond.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Gifts and donations, may I have a motion to accept the gift of eight black leather office chairs from Mr. Mark Mandia?
Navarre.
Thank you, Mr. Navarre. Is there a second?
Reese.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Comments from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. With that takes us to the highlight of our evening. May I have a motion to authorize the administration to proceed with the implementation of a blended learning model for grade K to six beginning February 8th as presented?
McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there a second?
Winters.
Navarre.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Comments from the board? Ms. Reese? You're on mute, Andrea.
Sorry, I was trying to read something that I want to read, but to, I just wanted to address, I know a couple of people mentioned the preferring it five days and I 100% respect that. Having, in a, being in a building that has students in it five days a week, I just, I'm not saying it could never go to that. I do really think this day is for kids. I know people don't agree with me and that's okay. And I know some people do. But these little, these little guys are doing a phenomenal job and their teachers are doing a phenomenal job. But it is really, really, really not as easy as people think it will be to be in a mouse all day and to do all the things that they can do. Are they going to do it? Are they, are most of them going to love it? And are most of them going to be so excited that they're in school? Absolutely. But it really, really is because I see it. I see it every day. So, and I'm not trying to talk you into it. I just don't want you to think I'm being disrespectful by, by even suggesting it. It really is something I believe in as an educator. And I know that that may, you may not agree, but I did want to say that. And then I was trying to get my screen, but I've been finagling a screen all day. So I can't finagle a screen anymore. Just to read, I had questioned, we received the addendum on Friday and I had questioned Dr. Zerby about that fifth day. And I think there's a little bit of confusion on the fifth day. So once it's approved tonight, if you could reiterate again to the building principals so they can reiterate correctly to their staff what that fifth day means. Because what you said to me on Friday is not exactly what you said to me today. You had said it's basically the same, but virtual. And I had discussed time for small group and that. And I'm not going to read the email because it's not necessary, but you, what you had said tonight versus what you said in that email were two slightly different things. So if you could make that Friday clear to the staff and the building principals, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Any other comments from the board? Okay, the one thing that I just want to reiterate is that as always, you know, I'm supporting this. I do think that this is the next logical step in getting our kids in person as much as they and their families choose to. I do want to caution though, that just as we've seen with some neighboring districts, that there is always that possibility of closures. And you know, I know that we saw it with our neighbor next door at Springford and Potts Grove this week both had 14-day closures that came through discussions with the county health department. So you know, the more that we are good with our mitigation measures in each building, the more that we are practicing our social distancing in the buildings, in the communities, and the more that we can cooperate with contact tracing if and when it's necessary. Those are all the things that help us to stay open for longer. So I just wanted to make sure that we reiterate that. And, and Dr. Zerby, I hope that we can get a date. Once we get the responses from this survey, I'm hoping that we can get a date put into that TBD for the high school. And I would encourage our high school families to talk to your kids and talk to, you know, your kids' friends, parents about what their reasons are for their choices. And you know, if you feel like there are a lot of kids who are choosing not to go because their peers aren't going, maybe it's just, you know, you have to have those conversations and maybe that will help to drive the numbers up. I know that there are some children who are just not going because virtual is working for them. And that's a different conversation altogether. But I do encourage our families to talk to each other and and hopefully we can get more kids in to make the experience more enjoyable for the kids who are coming in at the high school. And then hopefully we can revisit bringing them in more often.
I apologize. I had two other things written down. One was a member, both from members of the public, that I wanted to address their concerns before, before we voted. One was to the secondary parents, you reminded me, Kim, that said the T, to be determined. I agree with that. I will make note to everyone because everyone does say, well, this is doing this and that is doing that. I teach hybrid right now in secondary. I was supposed to start full-time on the fourth. It's been pushed back to the ninth due to the 14-day closure. But we have not gotten our numbers yet just because of the closure. I'm sure they're going to give them to us soon. And in our buildings, they specifically told parents they could only guarantee three feet, six inches for secondary, not methactin. I'm just saying, so that may cloud people's decision. So I don't have numbers yet, but I think that would be interesting for us to have when we're making our choices about seven to 12. In full transparency, I have three children who are all secondary. They all attend hybrid. They all take the bus. So I am in full support of having children return. I just am glad that methactin is doing it as safely as they can. Then the other question that I wanted to address was Ms. Arnon's question with what, if anything, is being different, being done differently at Arrowhead? And that is a fair question. I also, I noted when my kids went back hybrid, some teachers did have the, not many, but some did have the Plexi, not many, but a couple did. And one had a shower curtain, which that was unusual and interesting. But that's, that make them feel better. So anyway, what is being done in Arrowhead? If anything differently?
Well, I think it's important to note that Dr. Zerby did call attention last week to the fact that what we understand of the cases at Arrowhead, while it is kind of alarming, the number of cases that we had in that school were not attributed to spread within the building. It was exposures outside of the building. So while I do think that, you know, it raises some interesting questions, but I do also think that we, we have not determined that there is, it's coincidental that it was at Arrowhead that had a high number of exposures in the community that translated into cases of COVID.
No, and I misspoke. I understand that completely. I just meant her. And maybe we're not doing anything differently and that's fine. Just she's right. Ms. Arnon is correct that we need to address that. It might, it might change an Arrowhead parent's decision. It may not. And just addressing that the building is different. And, and there's still, I would imagine, the most important, but she brought up some other things. So if the answer is nothing, that's fine. I would imagine it's still the six feet distance. And also those class size numbers might be different because of the odd shape of their class. They may not be able to hold, like that must be the 17 to 20 we're talking about. So if the answer is nothing is different, that's fine. But I just wanted to address her question.
If I could just comment real quick, you know, I definitely appreciate all the statements your guys are saying. I just think we should be cautious when we're saying Springford is closing, Potts Grove is closing, only because when you look at it, Springford has over 12 buildings. So there's a couple of section buildings that closed. The elementary stayed open. Potts Grove, a building stayed closed. I don't want us to put fear into that situation. I think that's one of the things that I don't want to do. That's just my first comment because they shut it based on what was happening in the building, which is the new recommendations of what was put into place. The other thing I just want to, I'm not going to go into debate about asynchronous or asynchronous. But you know, our community, those are the people we need to focus on and the taxpayers who pay for us to make the decisions to educate our students. This plan is great. Of course, I would like five day, but the four day we have, the fifth day shouldn't just be an allocated asynchronous situation. I think the teachers and working with Dr. Walsh and his team are going to work with each area that where they need to implement asynchronous and where they're going to implement times for breakout. You know, that should be fluid throughout the whole week. So if math that day needs it, but then tomorrow this should be fluid, I think that's how instruction is supposed to be. It's about flexibility. Keeping the high expectations, but flexibility for the teachers to know when it's appropriate, when they need to do those asynchronous moments, those breakout rooms, those individual conferences. So I mean, I understand why we're advocating for it, believe me, Mrs. Reese, but I just don't want us to have it to be so detailed that Friday will be this. It really has to be fluid because we have to rethink this teaching because as we just saw, there's, there's a percentage that really do need us to focus on them. So I just want to put that out there. I mean, this is just kind of the statement saying that I support this K through six instruction. But you know, we owe it to the kids that this is what we got to focus on is really doing some individual targeting for these kids so they continue to excel.
And I 100% agree that it should be fluid. It just, Dr. Zerby said it will be the same on Friday as it is Monday through Thursday, which was not the message. And then I'm not trying to scare anybody. I can't wait to get back to work. Sorry. And just so you know, I'm not at all. I want to get back there. And then Dr. Zerby, I guess you're going to answer the question I had.
What Dr. Zerby was saying earlier was that the Fridays going forward will be the same as Fridays are now in that it is a virtual day. And our teachers and our students will use it as, as needed for each individual class, individual students, individual teachers. So there may be some small group learning. There may be some asynchronous time where the teacher is able to work with a smaller group and the rest of the class is not. And I agree with Ms. Kangkrow. I don't think that it's up to us to get into that level of detail. And I think that it's important for us to continue to allow the building principals and then the staff within the buildings to figure out what works best for them and their student population. And I think that's, that's what's happening. Are there any other comments from the board?
Am I, are we going to get an answer to my question? And if the answer is nothing, that's fine.
As this related to Arrowhead. Dr. Zerby, is that something that you could provide or?
I can provide a lot of answers. Which question are we talking about?
About the ventilation and the classroom dividers and
There are no, there are no changes to ventilation in any of the buildings other than what Mr. Jones has reported in a previous report to the board as part of the work that was, that took place in a number of our buildings. The only other addition in terms of mitigation matters is that we have purchased and will have ready shields for use in the cafeteria to allow for greater protection within, within the classroom or within the cafeteria setting. So they're commonly referred to as like a plexiglass shield, but it's a protective shield for certain areas.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries nine zero. Let's see. Oh, we still have more voting items. We're all excited for that to be it. I have a motion to approve Ms. Drummond as our CIU legislative representative for the annual term of the calendar year 2021.
Mrs. Kangkrow.
Okay, I hear Ms. Kangkrow with the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Purdue? Any comments? Ms. Drummond, thank you as always for doing this. You are invaluable in that role. Provide us with a lot of information on what's happening at the IU and I greatly appreciate it. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries nine zero. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the spring and fall offseason return to play plan as presented?
McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Is there a second?
Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Dates for board members calendars. We have our meetings for February as listed here. And is there anything for old business? Anything for new business? All right, so at this time, we will now take courtesy of the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could come before the Board of Directors in the future. We ask you keep your comments to four minutes or less. The board may choose to respond to matters following in the conclusion of the courtesy of the floor period. But just as with the public comment section, it is not a question and answer time. I think all of our time is too valuable to let it get carried away there. So we will respond at the conclusion of the time. If you pre-registered, if you could, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, Jim Malik, whenever you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Ms. President. I have to disagree with you on your, your questions and I have to disagree with you on your, your questions and, and you saying that you say your time is too valuable to waste on answering questions from the public. Is that what I heard? Your time is too valuable to waste on quest, answering questions from.
Dr. Malik, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna jump in and clarify. I said our time is too valuable collectively, everyone on this meeting. Go ahead. I'll restart your time.
Oh, that's, that's nice of you. But when I said you, I was referring to, to you, meaning the entire board. I think that policy is, is terrible. It, it shows just how much you disrespect the public. The reason your school is a safe haven is because it's closed. Nobody's there. So, you know, if your mitigation methods actually worked, you could just open up and have school. But obviously then they don't work and it's not safe to open up because you're closed. I'd suggest you look at the McMarine recruit study and the Danish study that evaluated mitigation methods, including six feet of distance and masks and showed they didn't work. So, you know, I think you need to educate yourself. I mean, you, you start talking about things like contact tracing and, and these other things. I don't think you really understand. You need to go look at some raw data to figure out what the real story is. You know, where, where does the six feet come from anyway that you're safe? Does that mean five foot, eleven inches, you're not safe? There are studies out there that show if somebody sneezes, the virus goes 12 feet. Mask or no mask. So, you know, six feet is some arbitrary number somebody's using. Plus the virus is aerosolized and floats in the air for two, three hours. So none of what you're doing is really going to work. I appreciate the lecture by Ms. Reese on why you approved the 3% preliminary tax increase. My question is, why hasn't anybody discussed the $5.5 million tentative surplus? And what are you going to do with that surplus? Are you going to apply any of that surplus to a tax increase? Don't you think we should start maybe at zero instead of 3%? With $5.5 million of surplus? And this being what? The fifth year or sixth year of multimillion dollar surpluses? I think it's irresponsible for you guys to vote on 3% when you got a $5.5 million, $5.6 million surplus. What about the $2.6 million of prior year surplus you guys put into the Peasars Fund to pay for this year's increase, which is only 0.4%, which comes out to what? $300,000? What's going to happen to the $2.3 million? That's sitting in the fund now. Going to, we're going to get that back? What's the anticipated cost of the Eagleville project? Nobody can give me a number. It's between seven and 11 million. Can you tell me who put it out to bids? It's out to bids. The board didn't do it. Somebody in property or Zerby put it out to bids. Why no competitive bids for KCBA's position? They get the job and don't have any fee negotiations for 7% of the total. That's 500 grand with no competition. Can you explain? You know, what's going on? Can you tell me, you know, who's, who's running the Eagleville money trough?
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Next I have Jessica Bradbury. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Jessica Bradbury, Lower Providence Township. As Dr. Malik pointed out, the potential increase of 3% where we're in a surplus after many years still has us falling short of the proposed budget for next year. Is that correct? And at this point, even though the budget is preliminary, unless you make really drastic cuts, it seems like an increase is likely. I would guess 3%. But whatever percent we land on, would you please be able to break down for all of us in really simple terms? How you will use the additional funding from our tax dollars? How much of it will be used to fund the $24 million Arrowhead project? Where the board accepted every single one of the KCBA proposed add-ons, which included things like spending $100,000 on a distributed antenna system so that our staff have good wireless service. I think most of us can agree Arrowhead was in need of attention. But is a two-story glass library a need? Or is that a want? And a gym that far exceeds the sizes of other elementary school gyms? Is that necessary or overspending? When we have a school that will be so large, it'll be at 64% capacity based on current enrollment. Enrollment that continues to drop year after year. Justifiable spending, overspending. I think the people of the community could understand the need for a tax increase if you explain it transparently. Perhaps it would be more positive if you were using it to pay our teachers. Pay them competitively compared to the other local districts. We're in the lowest of Montgomery County districts for how our teachers are paid. Our teachers deserve a fair and competitive salary. Our district should be positioned to attract new talent and retain the wonderful and talented teachers that we have today. Our district should make it a goal to climb the ranks in the category of best places to teach. Where we're currently ranked 18th in Montgomery County out of only 21 school districts. Also, I've sat through so many meetings, committee meetings, working sessions, regular board meetings, where members of the public ask very thoughtful and direct questions. I've watched you take notes. I've heard you say you'll get back to us with answers. When can we start expecting, can, when can we expect to start hearing some of those answers? Our time is valuable too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradbury. Uh, next I have Chunling Ma, whenever you're ready.
Hi, Chunling Ma, we're Sister Township. Um, I second with what Dr. Malik and Ms. Bradbury just said. And I was tired of asking the same questions. But again, just like as Ms. Bradbury said, we just kept waiting for answers, but we got none. I just want to reiterate. First, I also want to ask about, about the Eagleville project. And how, how big is the scope? How much is the dollar amount? And, and it's called Eagleville facade project. I, I think the name is misleading, just like the Arrowhead forward. Uh, it's not just a facade. It's also, I think it from the December property meeting, it also include addition to a few classrooms. So that name probably should be given the more proper name. And also about the budget surplus every year of a few million dollars. And, and also I think, um, um, some people from the Facebook group point out this project, 3% budget increase also has a 1.5 million shortage. And I, I think the budget itself is kind of conflicting. It's not really a, a workable budget, budget to be proposed. And then with so many years of budget surplus, um, can we just use this for a teacher's salary increase? And we're paying, I think the average salary for the teacher in our school district is eight, I think 87K if I remember right, and, or 83. And the neighboring district, like a Wheat, Wheat Pain, the Wheatahican, they pay like a 93. I don't, because I'm in the nineties. So we're really not paying competitive salaries for our teachers. How can we have this good education? No wonder our ranking has dropped over the years. And we've been spending way much, too much money on constructing buildings, making all this kind of construction projects. And then we don't even ask for competition, like compare negotiated price with KCBA. That's just really surprising to all, all the residents, how you spend our money previously. And also, and I like to bring on the, going back to school for the seven to 12th grade students. I think, uh, they, they looked like they are more resilient. But I think in reality, they are probably more fragile. Because they are in the age of, they know something, but they don't quite know something. So they rely more on the support of their peers. And also the kind of a teamwork they build up through interpersonal, you know, interaction. If they keep, they're kept at home, I think their risk of a mental breakdown probably is even, even larger than the small kids. So I think, um, bringing those seven to 12th grade students back to school is, is also as urgent as the little kids. Yeah, again, I just want to ask the board to be transparent regarding the, the money, the project, the, the construction projects, how, how the money is being spent and how the budget is being worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ma. And finally, Joe Rittenhouse. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, Joe Rittenhouse, Lower Providence. Everything that was said by the people who just spoke, I'm in basic total agreement with. All I wanted to bring up was some considerations for the public and for the board and the administration. Now that we have some votes, I, all the budget I can touch on another day. But, um, I wanted to talk about the, the to be determined thing as well as going back to a five day. I think something that would be very, very helpful for the public is a, another timeline. I don't, my personal belief is I don't expect much to change between now and the end of the year. As far as going back five days, I, just my gut feeling of how, of how the board has voted and what we've seen. But I think it'd be genuinely beneficial for the public to have a timeline of what next year would look like. And going into what benchmarks we would need to hit to get back to a, the entire district back to a five day, you know, learning model. So I, I think that while we just had a vote that should be celebrated, I think that the next step is not to drop that ball and to continue on to be like, okay, now we're going to propose a plan that this is, these are the marks that we will get to get back to a five day. And the sooner we have that timeline fleshed out before the end of the, the academic year or the start of the next academic year, I think you're going to have much, a much happier family, you know, a much happier base of people because they're not going at two-week intermittent, you know, two-week goals every other week is something seems like it's changing. So, uh, something that's fleshed out long-term would be insanely helpful. As far as everything else, I, I love to speak to it another day. But I just strongly encourage the board to consider proposing a broken down timeline of what a back to normal learning model would look like going forward for the rest of the year and into next year. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rittenhouse. Okay, and with that, I will close the courtesy of the floor. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things, since it seems that we have some members of the public who may be new to the school budgeting process. I just wanted to reiterate that yes, we do approve a preliminary budget in January as part of that process. And it gets whittled down in, I guess this would be my sixth year approving this preliminary budget. I have never seen us land on a budget increase percentage that was the same in June when we approved the final budget as it was when we started in January. That's why it's a process. That's why we take the next six months to do it. And, and a lot of that work will be done in the finance committee. So I look forward to hearing updates as we always do on how that's progressing and as we close that gap as we always do. I think that, um, well, I will leave it at that. I'll see. Is there anyone else that has anything? Ms. Purdue?
Not really.
I guess I'm just have issues. Can you hear me better now?
A little bit, yes.
Okay, so I guess I just wanted to touch on the seven to 12. And I know Dr. Zerby mentioned that on the survey. So I guess I wanted to challenge, maybe trying to get some of the information from the survey that's going to go, I believe, tomorrow based on the way the board voted. That maybe will help get us some information on how we will proceed with the K to seven. I'm sorry, um, seven to 12. So that was, that's all I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think that that, from what I understand, that is the plan, Dr. Zerby. But just to confirm that once you get the survey data, then we'll be able to proceed with having more of a, an idea of when we can proceed with a seven to 12, more of a return in person. Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the cause? Go ahead, Mr. McGinnis. I see you're ready. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
McGinnis.
Paul has something to say.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, I just, I just ruined, I think it's an, just to, to piggyback on the, on the budget. When we talk about the surpluses, we do go through the process of identifying the surpluses over the years. Yes, sometimes they are because we have over budgeted. Oftentimes there are events that happened, for example, last year around reduced transportation and different items. We have chipped away every year at trying to get this to be more, more exact. That we made changes related to how we handle substitutes law that are filling in because we know that the original, the original staff won't be there starting in the first of September. We have, there's items on the preliminary budget around medical expense and prescription. We get three different waves of expectations of what the Buxmont medical expenses are going to be. Usually, almost every time, the first pass is much higher than the second pass related to those numbers. Mr. Booker used the first pass in this preliminary budget. There's lots of items related to the budget, the, the Department of Budgets that go through the process over the next five months. So I, I will take it on myself, I miss, Ms. Cancro was asking me to do this before, is to look back at some of the surpluses to itemize those as Mr. Booker has pointed out and reported back to us. So there's a better understanding around those items. I don't, it, it is the principle of transparency around the budget. You're welcome to attend the finance committee meetings. We go through this every month for the next five, looking at the different items and trying to understand the details. Certainly the elements around the contracts. We have one contract in fact finding right now and three other, two other contracts with Teamsters and Mespa that are, have started their negotiation process. So there are lots of, many variables that go around the budget that are very transparent. And I think the Mr. Navaret wants to speak towards the Eagleville project.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Just to, um, just to help clarify any confusion around Eagleville. The estimated project cost hasn't changed since the presentation to the property committee back in August. The, some total of the, of the three different parts of the project is 7.8 million. The genesis of the project was a, was, is actually faulty construction that has, of the facade of the building that has led to water intrusion and, and other issues that need to be remedied. These are, these are, these are problems that should have been remedied a decade ago and haven't been. But that's why we're here now and we're stepping up to make these changes. The project is being bid, it, as a, the, the main base of the project is the facade and the HVAC system, which is 20 years old, it's end of life. And the new system that we've proposed will allow us to control humidity in the building as well. So kind of making a, a double shot really at, at how we control moisture in the building. This, the alternate for the project was a modification to the front entrance. The primary reason for it is security. The byproduct of it is that when you push out the front of the building, you push it out on two floors. So the way the floor plan lays out, that does allow us to add two additional classrooms upstairs. I think it was discussed multiple times in property. I know that there's a large appetite for the, the front entrance modifications, but we'll see where the numbers come back. And that, that's why we bid these projects out. I'll also note, there was a comment made. I'll also note there was a comment made about, uh, spending on facilities for, I don't know, I would say at least the 10, 20 years prior to, uh, my joining this board three years ago. A lot of the facilities in this district were fairly grossly neglected. Uh, it's what led us to where we are with Eagleville. It's what led us to the creation of the master facilities plan that we took on starting back in 2016. What that's led to is a controlled, um, plan for borrowing and repairing of our facilities. Excuse me. Um, we've done major work in almost all the buildings now at this point. Uh, and that work is going to continue. That's why when, uh, Mr. Bricker talks about the budget and the, uh, maintaining a level percentage of debt in the budget, we assume a certain amount, amount of borrowing every year. It's towards our facilities. It's replacing roofs, um, that were far past their useful life but hadn't been addressed. It's replacing HVACs, HVAC systems. It's, it's replacing the facade on a building that was constructed incorrectly. All of these speak to the, um, I guess the infrastructure of our school district. Uh, that's what our master plan is about. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Navaret, for taking the time to, to walk everybody through that. I really appreciate it. Uh, anything else? All right, so we've got Mr. McGinnis with the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Drummond? Oh, I saw Ms. Drummond's hand. Either way, I think we're all clear here. We're ready to adjourn. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.